Um, I was a lot of, a lot of proclamations.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting this afternoon. It is April 8th. We're going to have our invocation led by the Church and District Lay Leader, Pastor Greg Shararda, Shararda, from the Inverness First United Methodist Church. And after that, I have asked Citrus County Sheriff Major Bobby Lambert to come forward and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If you're willing and able, please rise.
First, thank you for all that you do. You're appreciated, and thank you for answering that calling. Please allow me to share a prayer with you. Gracious God, as we all gather here today, may these commissioners seek your wisdom and guidance as the county commissioners embark on their duties to serve the people of this community in Citrus County where we live, we work, and we play. May their deliberations be guided by justice, fairness, and concern for all residents. Help them and help each of us to listen with open hearts and minds and to seek a common ground and to make decisions that will foster unity and progress. May their actions and our actions reflect your values of compassion, integrity, and service. We pray for strength and discernment for each of these as they navigate challenges and opportunities. We pray, Lord, that these public servants have personal peace in their lives, the love of family, and joy in their task. It is in your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this eighth day of April 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrett, Commissioner Jeff Kennard, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Howard, I believe we have an additional item. I would also like to request the board's indulgence in moving N1 up after the last time certain of H3.
Yes, there's a 2026 federal appropriation request to select the projects for fiscal year 2026 funding consideration. This is requested to be added by our Congressman Bill O'Rakus. It was time sensitive, so we need to make a decision today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved the agenda with the addition and moving N1.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment?
I have something.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'm fine with the addition. I'm fine with you moving your agenda item up. I think that it's important. I know some people aren't going to be happy with me saying this, and I'm not, I came here going to ask for something to be removed, but I can read the room, I think. But we're going to have a conversation, I think, pretty shortly about how we are supposed to do government, right? We have a presentation today that the board has not discussed, the board did not ask for. It would be harmless because it's a nonprofit, but my point is, the five of us already sought the information. We've already gathered the information, so this really isn't for us. And so I was surprised on there when we talked about state of homelessness. I didn't know why the Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition isn't giving that, but then I saw the backup, and I think it's going to be more of a pitch. So last year, I heard from two commissioners, not me, I believe it was Commissioner Kennard and Commissioner Bays, had made it clear last year, when we were already talking about moving forward and giving property, and the two of you kind of gave a slowdown. The boards never discussed this. This isn't something we're moving forward with. But it appears when the board hasn't asked for something and it's on the agenda and we're being presented, and people I'm sure are here to hear this, like we are moving forward with something. And I don't think this is the way we should be moving agenda items or doing business. I'll leave it to the board's discretion if the board goes on with that, but, I mean, if we're just learning about things, I literally could fill up every board meeting if commissioners are allowed to just do that and hear from a lot of great nonprofits out there that are helping the homeless. I will probably, because of this, Ms. Lynn, next, uh, next meeting, under my name, I want to talk about homelessness. I brought up some things in the strategic planning meeting. It, it just didn't seem to go anywhere. So if the board is ready for that conversation, and by doing this, obviously you are, I think that we need to have a more comprehensive way to look at things. I think our sheriff, who I saw here, has probably a lot to say about this. I see the United Way here. I'm sure they have a lot to say about this, and many others have approached me. So, um, we, I'm just talking about doing government right. We're going to talk about that today, and this, doing it this way is, is not right. So I, I'm putting that out there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
I agree with Commissioner Finnegan, and I also do not want to see N1 moved up because I think we need to have a lot of discussion about N1, and I don't want it moved. I want it to stay right where it is.
I think the intent was to move it up so that we could have a discussion about it and accommodate the people here for open to the public.
No. I'm sorry. I don't want it moved. I want it to stay exactly where it is.
Call the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1. Thank you. Next on our agenda is proclamations and awards.
Motion to approve item B1 through 4.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Please join us down front. Can we please have both groups representing Gopher Tortoise Day please come forward?
Whereas gopher tortoise day will be observed annually in Citrus County on April 10, and whereas gopher tortoises have lived in Citrus County for 2 million years, yet today they are listed in the state of Florida as a threatened species. And whereas a gopher tortoise is both iconic and a keystone species, dispersing plant seeds and providing shelter to more than 350 other commensal species within its burrows, including other imperiled species. And whereas the people of Citrus County treasure our wildlife and the natural heritage that benefits us all, gopher tortoises habitat needs protection. The economic and ecological well-being of Citrus County is dependent of the county's natural resources. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby proclaim April 10th as Gopher Tortoise Day in Citrus County, Florida, and urges all citizens to protect these species by doing and learning more about them. Executed this eighth day of April 2025.
So unfortunately, my teammate Alice Herden of Parks and Recreation was not able to be here. But my chapter, the Citrus chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, has had many opportunities to work with Parks and Recreation and other county government offices, and we truly appreciate the partnerships that we've been able to have and bring awareness to Citrus County's natural treasures. Gopher tortoises are a keystone species, which represents the domino effect of preserving natural resources and habitats, either for the good or for the bad. And we want to bring recognition to the protection of gopher tortoises being one of those steps towards the good. We are pleased, my chapter, to be participating in the first annual Gopher Tortoise Day. That will be in two days on April 10th, and that'll be held at the Beverly Hills Community Center. And we encourage anybody who wants to learn more about gopher tortoises to come, including our commissioners. Thank you.
Those representing Water Conservation Month, if you could please come forward.
Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature in the state of Florida, water management districts in the Citrus County are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas Citrus County and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, as Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas each business, industry, school, and citizen can help save water by following water restriction ordinances and participating in conservation programs. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Water Conservation Month in Citrus County, and urges all residents and businesses to help protect our precious water resources by practicing water-saving measures. Executed this eighth day of April 2025.
This month marks the 27th year that Water Conservation Month has been declared. Since then, we've made great strides towards understanding water efficiency and how we can impact it with programs and initiatives. So thank you very much for your support.
Those representing National Library Week, if you could please come forward.
Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their countries, cities, towns, and schools, serving their communities and play an invaluable role, both in person and virtually, in adapting to our changing world, expanding resources, and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs, collections, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equal access for all, offering citizens the opportunity to explore new worlds and become their best selves through access to a broad range of materials, internet resources, multimedia content, informational and educational programs. And whereas library supporters and advocates across the nation recognize that strong libraries make strong communities and join together to celebrate our libraries. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida does hereby proclaim April 6th through the 12th, 2025, as National Library Week and encourages all residents to visit their library in person or online. Executed this eighth day of April 2025.
Thank you, commissioners. This week, libraries are celebrated across the country for their vital role in communities. Citrus libraries help make our communities stronger. I want to thank the staff, friends of the library, volunteers, for their many hours of dedication and hard work in making sure our libraries remain a valuable part of our community. Thank you.
Those representing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through the 29th, if you could please come forward.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the 911 service is a lifeline that people depend on in emergencies, the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Citrus County Sheriff's Office 911 Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are a critical, and are critical to the safety and of all first responders and are responsible for engaging with callers who are often under duress and in danger to obtain necessary information and determine the severity of the emergency and are also responsible for dispatching first responder personnel and managing the ongoing incident. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator at the Citrus County Sheriff's Office has exhibited compassion, empathy, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners declares April 13th to April 19th, 2025, shall be recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Citrus County, Florida, in honor of the men and the women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Executed this eighth day of April 2025.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and celebrating our great telecommunicators that we have employed at the sheriff's office. This is near and dear to my heart because way back in 1993, this is where I started as a dispatcher for our sheriff's office. So I would encourage and invite all of our commissioners next week, during that week that we're celebrating telecommunications, to stop by our communication center. We've got a great menu in store next week for our daytime and evening shifts. So just looking forward to the great things for next week, so I'd encourage you to stop by. And thanks for recognizing this is a, it's an important part of our emergency services, not only for law enforcement, but our fire services, EMS, and they do a great job out there. So we appreciate everything that they do for us. Thank you.
Next up on our agenda this afternoon is the presentation from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council on our vulnerability assessment. Amy?
Hi there.
Gotcha. There we go.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Hi. My name is Amy Bidwell. I am the Principal Hazard Mitigation Planner with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. And today I'm going to do a recap and review of the outcomes of the Citrus County and City of Inverness Vulnerability Assessment. So a little bit of background, in May of 2021, Governor DeSantis signed Senate Bill 1954 into law. This comprehensive legislation encouraged governments to effectively address the impacts of flooding and sea level rise and provides a funding plan for these vulnerabilities, as well as implementation of mitigation projects. Citrus County partnered with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council in 2022 to apply to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for this grant to complete a vulnerability assessment in accordance with Florida Statute 380.093. The term of the grant was from July 1st, 2022, to March 31st, to 2025. The county received the award and notice to proceed in January of 2024, and we kicked off the project in February of 2024. The final report has been delivered to FDEP and is currently under review. So we are waiting to hear back from them for final approval. So in the assessment, we looked at two different types of flooding. We looked at inland and coastal flooding. Your inland flooding is going to be your intense and extreme rainfall, freshwater flooding, short-term street flooding. Sometimes the rain comes down faster than drainage pipes can carry it away. So these are the types of vulnerabilities and risks that we are looking at and assessing against critical assets. The other type is coastal flooding. This is going to be your tidal, your saltwater inundation. It can include king tides, high tides on a normal day or with rain and extreme onshore winds and storm surge from hurricanes. This is more likely to cause damage to buildings due to the salinity of the water and the endurance of it, the longer that it stays around. It could be days, it could be weeks, and it is becoming more frequent with sea level rise. We looked at and collected background data for critical assets and regionally significant assets. Some different types of assets in the inventory include transportation and evacuation routes. These are going to be your airports, your major evacuation routes such as Highway 19. This could be any major roadways within the county, railroad facilities, bridges. We also looked at critical infrastructure. This is going to be all of your wastewater, your stormwater drainage, waste facilities, military installations, communications, et cetera. We looked at critical and community, critical community and emergency facilities. This is going to be anything from your schools to your local county government buildings, any state facilities, law enforcement facilities, public housing, risk shelter inventory, state and regional facilities that are in the county. The other category we looked at were natural, cultural, and historical resources. This is going to be all the conservation lands, your wetland and surface waters, parks, shorelines, cultural centers, and historic preservation sites. This is a list of the different assets that we looked at and the asset count for each. Overall, we had 105,500 assets that we assessed. In critical infrastructure, we had 87,438 assets. Transportation, we had 1,364 assets. Community and emergency facilities, there were 144. Natural, cultural, and historical, there were 16,562 assets that we've assessed. This is the critical facility, critical asset map. You can see we have taken everything and put them into those different categories, transportation, critical community, critical infrastructure, natural and historical resources. The second phase of the project was to conduct an exposure analysis. The exposure analysis is conducted to show the depth of water associated with specific flood scenarios. On the screen, these are the specific flood scenarios that we looked at. Storm surge for categories 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 hurricanes. High tide flooding, we looked at intermediate low and high current day flooding, and we looked at 2040 and 2070. And sea level rise, we looked at intermediate low and high for 2040 and 2070. And for rainfall, in the statute, we were to, if possible, look at the 500-year 24-hour storm. The 500-year 24-hour storm for extreme rainfall event was not analyzed for this assessment as there are currently no change factors or other best available data or modeling for our region. FDEP did accept that. In rainfall assessments, chain factors, change factors can be additive or multiplicative and are used to account for significant variations of average weather conditions that have an impact on the intensity, endurance, and frequency of extreme rainfall. This is a snapshot of the exposure analysis data. There were 2.6 million cells. This is a snapshot of the exposure analysis data. There were 2.6 million cells that were created through this that have flood depth data. So I'm not going to sit here and try to go over all of them today. It would be way too much. We would be here until next week. So we analyzed the critical assets to identify flood depths for each of the scenarios. This is an example from the table. This is the type of data that you will find in the table. This is a section of Ozello Trail. It is tagged OZ174. It is considered a major roadway and an evacuation route. This asset, this asset at this particular spot on Ozello Trail has an elevation of 3.97 feet. So when we ran the exposure analysis, you can see that we came up with the storm surge category 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 depths, 11-foot, 16-foot, 21-foot through category 3 through 5. These are potential rainfall impacts. Then we have the current rainfall at one point little over 1 foot. And in 2040 for the 100-year 24-hour event, almost 2 feet. And then in 2070, a little over 2 feet. Again, this is just at that section. When we did the roadways, we took them and had to take the lines and put them into sections so that we could get more accurate elevations and depth measurements for each section of the road. We have your current tidal information, and then it also includes future, intermediate, low, and high for 2040 and 2070. With tidal flooding, we also did an assessment of the potential days that these assets could see flooding from high tide, with this section of the road currently approximately 18 days a year. In 2040, it could increase to 55 days a year, and that's the low. And 2040 high, it could increase to 183 days a year. Again, that's on an annual basis. And just on that section of the road, Ozello Trail, we know there are many sections that go underwater. But this was a good example to pull so that you could see the types of data that are included in the exposure analysis. I'm going to quickly go through some maps. There are many, many maps. This one is the high tide flooding, intermediate, low, current. The maps are going to show you, just for the exposure, these are the assets that are exposed, potentially exposed to these levels of flooding. This is the intermediate high current for high tide flooding. Intermediate low, 2040. Intermediate high, 2040. Intermediate low, 2070. And high, 2070. Then we have the sea level rise. This is the intermediate low for 2040. This is the intermediate high for 2040. Low for 2070. High for 2070. This is storm surge. This is category 1. I think we're all pretty familiar with this level here. This is current. These are the critical assets. And off to the coastline, you can see all of the green. Those are all the shorelines, all the islands that are out there. These are all kind of a blob on there right now, but that's what those are. And then we have inland, more towards Highway 19. You can see that most of those critical assets are critical infrastructure that are impacted by storm surge and transportation and evacuation routes. This is category 3. Can see it shifts a little more to the east of Highway 19. And this is for a category 5. Okay, the third phase was the sensitivity analysis. With the sensitivity analysis, we are using this to show the risk level of each asset for the flood scenarios that we just looked at. So we evaluated the criticality throughout the county. The asset elevations were identified, and then compared to the flooding depths that we just discussed. For the assets that are represented by points such as a single structure, take this building for example, would be a point and a GIS layer on a map. We created a 50-foot buffer around those so that we could more accurately catch the actual elevation of the entire building rather than just a point or an address point. And for those represented by lines such as the transportation routes and especially the evacuation routes, we collected the elevations along the line features such as the example that I showed you for Ozello Trail. So with the sensitivity analysis, we had to create risk categories and assign them to each asset based on the depth of flooding and the asset area inundated. This helps illustrate the flood scenario impacts of the critical assets. These are the critical criticality levels that we determined. We did them first by overall categories, so critical infrastructure, community emergency facilities, natural, culture, and historical, and transportation evacuation routes. The levels, none, obviously, if it did not exceed asset elevation, the water level did not exceed that, then there's no criticality to it. For low, a water level above .1 to 6 inches above the asset elevation. Moderate is going to be 6 to 9 inches above the asset elevation. High is 9 inches to 24 above the elevation, and then extreme is going to be 24 inches or above. The only difference that you will see in the criticality levels assigned is going to be in the natural, cultural, and historical. And that is because when we looked at the wetlands and shorelines and conservation lands, it's not so much about the depth as those are naturally functioning floodplains. It's more about the percentage of area inundated, which kind of, you know, the more inundated they are, the less capacity they have to hold floodwaters. So for those, we did low at 25% of the area. Moderate is 50%, and then high is 75%, and then extreme would be 100% inundated. That's a snapshot of the sensitivity analysis data. And back to our example of Ozello Trail, that section of the road that has an asset elevation of 3.97 feet, we can see turned out to be extreme for all the hurricanes, categories 1 through 5. Rainfall is high. And the flood for tidal, intermediate, low is high as well as 2040. And then we get into the low, the, sorry, I read that wrong. Future tidal, intermediate high for 2040 is extreme as well as for 2070, low and high. And then these are the resulting maps. These are the tidal flooding frequencies. So this, these maps outline the potential number of days that we talked about for each asset. We categorize these into three different buckets. So if it is impacted possibly 1 to 50 days, and then 51 to 100 days, and then 101 to 183 days.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
With all due respect to the amount of work that's gone into this report, perhaps there's a summary that we could get to, go through the summary, and then once DEP submits their comments on it, then we can have some more discussion about, you know, what their suggestions are or their analysis of the data that, and I think there'll be a lot more, a lot more board discussion involvement in at that point.
Sure.
Just a thought.
No, that's absolutely, I understand. It's a lot of data. So I will go ahead and skip through the maps. Actually, I will go back. Hold on. Okay, back to the critical asset map itself. This shows everything that we looked at. So when we get to the summary of everything, we want to get to the meat and potatoes. So we want to talk about the focus areas that we have identified. So the next steps after a vulnerability assessment would be your adaptation plan and then implementation of projects for these focus areas. So the focus areas we have identified. The county has been divided into three focus areas based on the flood risk and the clustering of these critical assets. Homasassa is susceptible to high to extreme inundation from storm surge, high tide, and sea level rise. So we have outlined the southern portion of Homasassa and the coastal area of Homasassa as a focus area. They have a large concentration of critical infrastructure assets in this area. We discussed the city of Crystal River. They contain many critical assets and regionally significant assets. However, the city has conducted their own vulnerability assessment, and the entire city for them is a focus area. However, we did want to put focus on the conservation shoreline and islands that are out there. So we have included those in a focus area in terms of Crystal River area. The second major focus area for the county vulnerability assessment is going to be the northern area of unincorporated Crystal River. That's going to be up towards the power plant and the Barge Canal area. Those are considered regionally significant and critical assets to the community. So we wanted to make sure that we looked at those. And the third is going to be the city of Inverness and a portion of unincorporated Citrus County to the north and northwest of Inverness. This is particularly along the North La Canto Highway, East Gulf to Lake Highway, and Norville Bryant areas. You can see on the map here that is a very large cluster of critical assets. Very high risk to extreme rainfall in these areas. So we wanted to make sure that we consider that as a focus area in addition to the fact that there is quite a bit of development going on in that area, which is going to make it more vulnerable in the years to come. So we want to make sure that we're looking ahead and planning adaptation-wise for any rainfall, extreme rainfall issues there. So in summary, those, that's where we're at.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, so once, once DEP makes their comments, and this comes back for some board discussion, the mitigation projects, if you will, those projects would come prioritized from this board? Or that those projects would be suggestions from experts in the field? Or what happens at that point?
So at that point, when you start working on your adaptation plan, you take these focus areas, and the focus areas can be adjusted if they need to be, if we need to look at different areas as well. But what you would do is kind of a similar process that we had with this project. You would have stakeholders, you would have community input, you would have board input, county staff input, engineers, all of your people, all the same people on board, the steering committee, that would identify potential projects. And then those would, we would develop a ranking methodology to prioritize them. And then, once you get to the implementation part, is where you would actually have your engineers to actually model the actual, you know, project. So the adaptation portion would be more a visioning process and developing potential mitigation strategies.
Okay. Yeah, it sounded like an awful lot of engineering ahead of us there. Is that something, that process, is that something that the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council would be involved with? Or once this, this part of it is done, you guys are out of it?
No, we could help with, absolutely assist with the adaptation planning portion. Once you get to the implementation portion and you're actually putting these projects on the dirt, we're not, you know, we don't do engineering and construction.
Sure, sure.
But yeah, we can assist with organizing at that point.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
So Amy, there's been a lot of talk about the loss of islands, if you will. Was there any consideration on how the loss of acreage of these islands have an impact on flooding and storms, and what happens to communities as the first line of defense?
Yep. So at this point, this phase, just doing the vulnerability assessment, we don't really look into the adaptability of it or where it needs, you know, we need to have adaptation projects. But we did make it a focus area and make sure that, because when you start to lose shoreline, as I mentioned earlier, these are naturally functioning, you know, and beneficial floodplain areas. They hold these waters. So in the adaptation phase, you would definitely want to look more into how the county and the communities are impacted by loss of these areas.
And then my second question would be, and I think you and I've had this discussion in the past, about many of our residential areas, whether it's Ozello Road or through Crystal River, every place that there's a bridge, if you will, but there's really not a bridge, it's a culvert. Would we be better served if those were actually bridges so that the water could flow more easily? Because a lot of times, these culverts get packed with trash and junk and sediments, and then the water can't flow through them. They back up, and then it just comes over the top. So as we're looking at this, would we be better served to look at, and I know Ozello Road is a mess, so on a reconstruction, rebuild, would that be something that you would encourage us to look at?
I'm certainly not an engineer, so I can't, you know, say definitely that that would be a solution. However, the, making those bridges, or at least opening up the culverts, particularly in Ozello, would be a mitigation technique that I would recommend and put in the project list for consideration.
Thank you. Board members? Anything else?
Thank you. And, but funding does open up May 1. Is that correct?
I believe the next cycle opens up May 1.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda today is the presentation on the state of homelessness from the Catholic Charities and Daystar Life Center. Hello, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm tall, so. Well, thank you for allowing us to come talk today. Is our presentation coming up? So I'm Maggie Rogers. I'm the Executive Director for Catholic Charities, Diocese of St. Petersburg, and many of you I've met one-on-one. Some of you have been kind enough to take a visit to some of our locations. And before I get started, I certainly don't want this to sound like I'm selling anything. Every work that I do is because of the beautiful partnerships I have with the people that are behind me. I am certainly an advocate for collaboration, and how we get this done is simply by all of our beautiful partnerships that we have in the community. When I started 11 years ago, we had five shelters. We now have seven. And so I ask that when you leave here today, you take a consideration of like, can we have a community conversation? Because you're absolutely right, that is what's needed. And I hope that I'm part of that conversation. I hope that I'm able to be at that table. If you look at one Catholic Charities out of the 168 that are in the country, you've literally only seen one. We are all extremely different. Catholic Charities, Diocese of St. Petersburg, I have 250 staff. I cover five counties. We have seven shelters, an immigration department, a very large rent and utility assistance program. But we also have 2,000 units of affordable housing. And so we're continuing to expand that. We now have 18 units in Citrus County. I'm currently looking for land and hoping to expand that. You want to hit the slides? Oh, okay. And so the big picture really is, is that we are here. We not only have affordable housing in Citrus County and hoping to expand more, we recently just purchased a building, and we plan to move some of our social services into that building as well. Next slide. And how we got started 18 years ago with our shelters, and this actually was not our first shelter. Our first shelter was for women and children with HIV/AIDS. And 18 years ago, the City of St. Pete Police ordered the mayor to slash the tents. And the tents were slashed in St. Pete. And what you can see is there's a video that I don't know if it'll play, but it's somewhat inappropriate. There's bad words. If it does play loud, I apologize. It is the police slashing the tents. And at that time, you then had a crisis, and particularly in the media, you had tents being slashed and no place for the homeless to go because they just had no tents. And Bishop Lynch said, hey, I have this land. Let me offer it to you as a pilot program. And we were to only be there for six months. And 18 years later, it's really evolved into mass programming. And that success is because of all of our partners that are in the community. It is not Catholic Charities doing all of the work. It is everybody coming on site and doing it. Next slide. And so day one, in 2007, we opened up with only 100 tents. You can go ahead and switch. And now we're at 255. And it started out with tents on the ground and then became tents on the platform. And nobody is like, ugh, nobody loves tents. It's not really fancy and flashy. But it's really about the wraparound services. It's about the life app, Pinellas Hope. It's about everything else you get. Every single meal is donated. And you're probably wondering by who? It's not the Catholic Church, it is not Catholic charity staff, it's not our employees, it is all of our partners. It is, most of the donations are coming from other parishes, other churches that are not Catholic, Presbyterian, Methodist, you name it, they all come on site because they help our wheels spin. Go ahead, next slide. But we didn't start there. In 2009, 2010, we started building affordable housing. We broke ground for our first 80 apartments. Those first 80 apartments were all permanent supportive housing, and they were strictly for the homeless moving from Pinellas Hope to Tampa Hope, because our commitment, and we know what solved the problem, is housing. But in the meantime, you can't just not do anything. And so, what we wanted to be sure is that we are serving people while we're also building. And so, I always say, I feel like I am building the ship while I'm already at sea. So, we started out with those 80 apartments, and then, go ahead and flip. In 2016, we added another 76 units. And so, now that property has 156 units of permanent supportive housing, all four formerly homeless. About 90% of them have come from Pinellas Hope, others have come from other partners in the community that are also serving homeless folks that need housing. Go ahead. And again, we're not huge fans of the tents either. It is just a way for us to get started, and to get started quickly providing services. So, in 2018, we started with our shipping containers, where we converted shipping containers into three individual units. Each unit is 30 square feet, has AC and heat, and underneath a storage. And again, that is not the end, that's not where we want them to stay. We want them to move on, we want them to go to permanent housing. Go ahead, next slide. In 2020, we realized that a critical need on-site was medical. A lot of folks are getting discharged from the hospitals, and then they're coming to our shelters, and so, we opened a medical respite program, so when they're discharged, they immediately come to us. We have two full-time nurses, one is a PhD-level nurse, on-site at all times, and they rotate. And then, they're also be able to go into our clinic that is theirs, they can provide medical assistance. Go ahead. And for years, we tried to replicate this model in Hillsborough County, and everybody's like, no, no, no tents in my town. And so, I said, well, hey, you know, we want to provide services. No, was not going to go. But what happened in 2020, COVID. And so, March in 2020, my colleagues at the City of Tampa called and said, hey, really, you know, we're closing everything, how can you help us? I said, because I'm wild and crazy, hey, let's do a Tampa Hope, or a Pinellas Hope model. And they said, okay, you want tents in the City of Tampa? And I said, yes, I do. The mayor called me two days later, and she allowed me to open with 100 tents on Florida Avenue, using the building I have behind that is for those with HIV/AIDS. And we housed those folks in tents on Florida Avenue for 60 days. Go ahead, next slide. And during those 60 days, I had 210 homeless go through, and 97, we moved to apartments when every single thing in the country was closed. We were moving folks into permanent housing. And it was not easy, because apartment complexes weren't open, we were begging, borrowing, trying to get folks into these apartments. Go ahead, next slide. And the mayor said, you know what, you know what you're doing on homeless services, we'd like you to replicate this here permanently. We spent the next year looking for land, because it is all about location, location, location. And we went back and forth, who's going to loan the land, who's going to invest the money. And I wanted to have stake in the game, so I sold a building, and I purchased the land, $2.1 million Catholic Charities invested to purchase the land where Tampa Hope now is. And we closed in November of '21, a month later, because we wanted to open quickly. Go ahead, next slide. We opened up December 13th of 2021. Next slide. There you go. And, again, with the partnership of the entire community, fire department coming, helping us get set, City of Tampa folks, their staff, planning, zoning, you name it, coming on-site to help us prepare to move forward. We opened with 120, then we moved to 125 tents. Go ahead. And Life at Tampa Hope replicates Pinellas Hope. And so, walk away with the conversation that it is all about the services on-site, GED, medical, life school classes, housing resources, whatever you name it, we're going to figure it out, substance abuse, mental health. Go ahead, next slide. Go ahead, next slide. And currently, it looks much like a campground, just like Pinellas Hope did when we first opened. Pinellas Hope had absolutely zero infrastructure, had no electric, no running water, staff were taking out their foldable tables, and their tents storing the day and working and closing it up and going home at night, because, again, we're building the ship while we're already at sea. Now, it is mass programming, has buildings, bathrooms. Tampa Hope is very much like that. We now use our disaster shower trucks and laundry trucks. The community center should be done this summer, which will have that, as well as a barber shop, full cooking kitchen, dining area, clothing closet. Go ahead, next slide. In April of '24, we opened our next model of our Hope cottages, which is a 64-square-foot shelter made by the Palate Company. We have 99 of those on-site, and we have another 90 that are waiting to go up. They're shipped in like shipping, like Legos. And so, now our capacity is 234. This summer, we'll be going up to 350. Go ahead, next slide. You can go, next slide. Oh, that's just the model of how quickly it goes up. And that's our site plan. Go ahead, next slide. And then, of course, our third crisis was in Pasco County, where such devastation over Hurricane Helene, as well as Hurricane Milton. And so, we partnered with Pasco County and opened up Pasco Hope, which, if you look at all three of our locations, none of them look identical to each other. We had to tweak what worked for each community differently, just like they're funded differently, just like they're supported, staffing differently. Go ahead, next slide. And again, looks very much like a campground right now, but the services are just the same. We bring all of our partners on-site, and that's what it is. Again, I reiterate, all of our partners coming to our property to help us do the work. Go ahead. And so, I don't want to focus on the cost of Pasco Hope, because right now, everybody that is there is currently displaced by one of the two storms. But Tampa Hope or Pinellas Hope, if you were to look at the cost, I'm pretty sure that it costs more to be in the hospital per night, I'm pretty sure that it costs more to be in the jail per night. If you look at either of ours, we're roughly under $30 per location. And again, it is really about our partnership. Go ahead. Also, we're very key in making sure that anyone that is coming into our locations is from where we say they're from. And so, we develop our own outreach team so that they are consistently out on the streets, working with this folks, waiting for them to get a bet at either of our facility. And they receive case management every single day. We also have transportation, so that if transportation is an issue, we have vehicles so that we can be taking them to where they need to go. We have Social Security Day, you name it, Employment Day. And you're probably wondering, why is there a vet tech and a cat on your picture, Maggie? Because that seems a little weird. And you're absolutely right. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, who can explain a little bit more about the vet tech and the cat.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, county commissioners. My name is Anne Marie Brearchek. I'm the Executive Director of Daystar Life Center. I'm not a presenter, and I'm not a politician, so forgive me beforehand. I'm going to tell you the story about Jesse. Jesse was a homeless man, and he came to us, he had 22 years of being a vet tech, and because of a very bad divorce and other situations, he found himself unhoused here in Citrus County. And he was receiving the wraparound services, which I nicknamed Wrap My Arms Around Services here at Daystar, and he's able to get himself out of homelessness. And that's awesome, that's a great success story. But to hear his trials and tribulations of the 240 nights that he stayed unhoused is troubling. The day before he was getting his job, his tent got ransacked, he lost all of his scrubs, and because of a donor, we were able to replace everything. But he was able to get his job, and we are so proud to say that Jesse's now a member of St. Benedict's Housing, and he's housed, and he's employed, and he's a great member of our community. He was one of the lucky people that were able to go on the bus tour. And after he finished the bus tour, he pulled Maggie to the side, and what he said was, imagine if I would have had this service in Citrus County, it wouldn't have taken me 240 days to get on my feet. Next slide. Defining homelessness, 718 homeless is what our point of time from our Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition. We have 127 in the last 24 months of the sheriff's office that were arrested that are unhoused. Over 750 homeless students in our school system. And I'm going to tell you, these numbers aren't accurate. I know they're not, because how hard is it to count and to keep track of things? And imagine people that are not staying in place, and they're trying to find a better way of life. And that's what we're dealing with here in Citrus County. Next slide. Our hospitals are on board. We have, both hospitals are HCA, and we also have Tampa General, who also is in partnerships with our Catholic charities. And both hospitals are on board. And if that doesn't speak volumes of what's going on, because we know that when you're homeless, what do you use as the hospital for our medical care? It will help, this project will help deter all the people coming into the, for just a sore throat or high blood pressure. It would help all of the relief that we need in our local hospitals. Next slide. Citrus Hope is much needed. That's a quote from Marcy Holder. Ms. Holder took the time to write a two-page letter, and I'm not going to read it, but it's inside your packet today, and I hope that you take the time to read it, because this is a woman who has her boots on the ground and knows what's going on in our county, and she supports our mission. Next slide. I thank you for your time, and I beg you to consider what this can do for our county. I have been a product of Crystal River Primary, Middle, and High School. I raised my family here, I've been here for 50 years. My boots are on the ground. I promise you, I would never want to do anything in Citrus County that would not benefit the people that are in need, and I know that this can make a change, and it can make a difference. And it all depends on people like you that can make this happen. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
So, I asked for this presentation not, I could have put it under my agenda item, and I didn't. It was a matter of some discussion with staff, because you can put anything under your own agenda item. But it's also not a vote, it's just a start of a real conversation. What I have noticed is that unless the homeless are panhandling in front of us in our backyard, rifling through trash cans, somebody told me, someone came down the road and was going through her trash cans, unless it is right in front of us, we turn a blind eye. And I could go down a rabbit hole of what that means psychologically, because we just don't want to admit that we fail our fellow humans. This is just to start a conversation. From a personal note, I believe in small government. I believe that government mucks most things up. I believe charity is the right way to go with this. I do believe that even if you want to look at it from a purely cold-hearted taxpayer standpoint, there is some savings, some significant savings to taxpayers, if and when it ever comes to some amount of stipend that they want to ask from us, because they can do this without us. They can buy the land, they can fundraise, they can do all that other good stuff. But if you look at the cost savings, it's $85 a day for our jail. It is an extreme cost for the hospitals. Haven't talked to them about pitching in with a stipend, but I wouldn't be surprised if they wouldn't do so. Marcy Holder addresses in her letter that there's a divert status in our hospitals sometimes, because, or at least, she can only speak for Tampa General, Crystal River, because there are homeless that are using the ER as primary care, which is ridiculously inefficient. And anyone who knows me knows I'm the efficiency girl, and let's get as most out of every single penny we spend as humanly possible while doing good things. So, you look at all that above, and I just wanted to start a conversation. I'm not looking for board of vote or board approval on anything. I would just hope to have your blessing for me personally, to work with Citrus County School District, and possibly CF, to see what kind of lands they have. Mostly, I'll be doing this as a charitable thing through just working with the folks that want to do this from a charitable perspective. But there may be, at some point in time, county involvement. There may be an ask at some point. And so, I just wanted to keep you all apprised of the situation, and I offer my gratitude to the three of you who went down and toured all the facilities. Thank you for going.
Thank you. Do you have anything?
Go ahead and chime in. The two facilities shelters that we visited, the Pinellas Hope and Tampa Hope, were incredibly impressive. Definitely moved the needle as far as my opinion of what I was going to see down there. Incredibly impressive, the wraparound services, the discussion of keeping those folks that are there moving along their path. That was impressive. I came home and had quite a discussion about it at the house, that they're doing some remarkable things down there. I do think that we need to make sure that we're including in this discussion the other folks who are already helping the homeless in our community, as Commissioner Finnegan said. And there certainly seems to be, when you look at the numbers, certainly seems to be more than enough homeless folks in this community that can use everybody's help. I would draw the line, though. I was concerned to hear you talk about asking for a stipend from the county. The county spent, the county commission spent a lot of years backing away from supplementing different nonprofits in the community. It took a long time to get back from that. I think that certainly county commissioners can participate in fundraising, helping these folks that are doing great things in our community. But as soon as, you know, my concern is that as soon as we start going back down that road and picking which nonprofits that we're going to give a stipend to, there's a whole nother population of folks that are saying, you're not offering a stipend for my nonprofit that's also doing good things. So, just starting the conversation is good, and I would like to see it continue for sure, because it is something that's needed in our community. But this is the start. This is the start. I should say, organizing along with the chamber and whoever else, you know, Daystar certainly, that was involved in organizing these bus trips down there, that was a start for sure. It was an eye-opener for me.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
I was totally on board with rolling back the stipends, and so, I totally understand your concern, 100%. And that does start to get into a worry of who do we support and who we don't. All of this originally started with us potentially having county land that we leased to them for a dollar a year for 50 years. And I believe Catholic charities would prefer to own the land if they can, in which case, they may still need some help that's not purely fundraising. But all of this is a big, squishy mess right now. We just need to start that conversation about location, 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 what land is available, et cetera, et cetera. And I believe I have most of the folks working on homeless on board. I even might have gotten the one that is the biggest holdout to soften on that, maybe. I don't want to speak for anyone right now, but I've been trying to build those bridges very diligently. And the one that is aimed at families in particular, I spoke to one of the board members, would want to roll into, we would be doing a family one at Citrus Hope, and then it would, we've got to stop siloing. We've got to stop siloing. We all have to specialize in what we do, and hold hands, and move forward, and work on this. And that's the ultimate goal. I mean, you've worked with me for over four years now, you know I'm a team player, so.
You're done. Commissioner Barrick.
Okay. I went on the trip. I was impressed by what I saw. However, I am a short person, and I was in the back of everything, so when they were giving out statistics, I didn't hear them. But it did give me an opportunity to talk to different people. Catholic Charities owns nine acres, right off of 490. We don't need to do anything about giving them more property, okay? I talked to one of the workers that was at the one in Tampa, and he had moved from Ohio, because he heard about the program, and he moved to Tampa. Moved right into the Tampa Hope, so that he could have a place to stay, and he works full-time as a security guard at night. So, it's like, if you build it, they will come. We have our own- Moved right into the Tampa Hope so that he could have a place to stay, and he works full-time as a security guard at night. So it's like, if you build it, they will come. We have our own population that are homeless. We have our own population that are not working. We are not doing good getting people jobs, and if they are getting jobs, we're not doing really well with Career Source getting them. But we do have the wraparound services, and that's what Daystar is using. They're using the wraparound services that the county is already footing through. We, as a county, are helping get LifeStream up and running, okay? So that we have a facility for the, you know, people with mental problems. For those that haven't been here very long, PATH has not asked for a single penny from the county. PATH is a wonderful project whether you like it or not. They do wraparound services. They do take the people to get their GEDs. They do get them training. They make them live by rules, which is what Hope makes them do, unless they decide they don't want to, and they leave. But it's not like we in the county of Citrus do not have programs. Daystar is using our programs. So if they would like to take their nine acres and build on it according to our building specs, you know, follow our, you know, building codes, I have no problem with the dioceses and the other people that want to donate money to do that. But I am a church and state person, picking winners and losers, okay? And we've tried, the board tried to get away from giving too much money to this one or too much money to that one, because that's not fair. There are many, many, very, very good nonprofits out there doing work every day. There are many, many churches out there that collect for these people. They give food donations, we give to CASA, okay? We give to Yummy or whatever it is, that, the girls thing. There's lots of organizations. It's nice that Daystar actually has this program running, but I can see them running it on their own, on their own property. So that's, you know, that's my personal feelings. And believe me, I go to church every Sunday, I believe in God, I believe in helping the poor. I give my fair share financially, and I give myself physically to doing things, to help people. But at this point, it's not my responsibility as a commissioner to encumber taxpayers' dollars for this. That's up to the individual taxpayers to say, okay, I want to give to this donation. I want to give my time, I want to give my money, and it's a very nice idea. And I know a lot of people out there are probably saying, oh, my God. Because they know me personally, but they know I give myself to all the things I do, okay? And I do watch what I do very carefully. So I agree, it's a good project, but I would not support it financially with any of our dollars, and I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
She brought up an out-of-towner that she spoke with, and she was at the back of the crowd the whole time. I think it would only be fair if you allow Maggie to address that, because I don't believe that to be accurate. That is a fear of all of us. It was a fear of mine originally, but Maggie is adequate.
Yes, please approach.
And also, in terms of the money aspect, if, I am very reticent to ever suggest, and this is, this is supposed to be a nice, warm, and fuzzy conversation to try to figure out how to move it forward, not to poke holes in it, preferably. As far as the money goes, I do want folks to recognize that if we keep people out of jail, like the couple, the son and mother that just spent two months in our jail that should have never been arrested, they were only arrested basically because they were homeless at a cost of $85 a day, there is definitely cost savings in helping this. So again, I just, I didn't want to go off on my own without having my colleagues' knowledge, understanding, your leaders in this community, you need to be kept apprised of this, and that's why I asked for this.
That was why I went to see the program.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Just before you answer that, sorry, Maggie, I don't know if the sheriff is still here. I don't see him, but the sheriff, we don't want that, the sheriff is not arresting homeless people for being homeless. It's not a crime, so I don't, I don't want people starting to think that. That'll put us down another rabbit hole. So excuse my interruption. Thank you, Maggie.
Yeah, I know, no. One to address your comment. Catholic Charities does not own nine acres or six acres. I can't remember what number you said. We don't own any land. I believe you're conflating the difference between Catholic Charities and the Diocese of St. Petersburg, which are two separate entities. And so I only own the building that St. Ben's is on. I actually do not own the land. And I only own the building that we just purchased, which is right next door to Daystar. Those are the only two things that Catholic Charities owns. When it comes to the Diocese, the Diocese does own land, and there are current internal conversations with the bishop discussing if he has future plans for any of that land, and if I would have access to it. So that's to address the land issue, but Catholic Charities does not own six acres. If I did, we wouldn't have even brought land up. Second of all, please be sure that I have, did not come here to ask for any money. I wasn't asking for a penny. That was not even a part of the conversation. And I believe that the conversation you had with that client, you were actually standing by Anne Marie during that conversation, and so she heard it, so I'm going to let her address that.
In no way do we allow outsiders or people from out of town to come into any of our organizations, not Pinellas Hope, not Tampa Hope, and not Citrus Hope when it does come here. That is what you must have misunderstood, because there's no way. We open up one day a week so that they can do referrals, and on that day, one of the questions is, where are you from? And they have special screening to make sure that what they're saying is correct, because if they came here from out of town, they need to go back to where they came from, because this is only for our Citrus County residents. So I apologize, Commissioner, you misunderstood that.
Just one minute. Anne Marie, when homeless are transient, they typically don't have ID. How do you know where they're really from?
So that's why we strategically made an outreach department that is internal. And so usually, our partnerships are with, so let me give you an example, like City of Tampa, our partnership is the City of Tampa Police Department, the City of Tampa Outreach Team, and Catholic Charities Outreach Team. They are boots on the ground outside every single day, working with somebody. We also have access to the HMIS system. So we're looking to see, like, you know, last month, did you go to this place? Two years ago, you were in the Salvation Army Shelter. A year ago, you were in the CASA Shelter. And so we know where you've been. We're tracking you all along, and the beds are full. And so it's not like we're just bringing in, you know, 100 people every single week. And so we know that you've been homeless on the street. The average is three to five years that they've been out there. And so while, while my staff are working with them, or while one of our partners are working with them, and for instance, at Pinellas Hope, it's the police entities that are bringing them to the shelter every Tuesday or Thursday during intake day. And so those police liaisons that are assigned to the homeless team, they're out there working with them. And my suggestion would be, is again, we would, Catholic Charities would invest and build another outreach department, so that we're out, boots on the ground. We know who's already in the encampment. And it's not like we put an advertisement out all across the country, come to Citrus County if you're homeless. The resources, just because we're here, don't exponentially grow in the community. And so, but we were very, very strategic with our outreach teams, making sure that they're the boots on the ground, that they're seeing the people every single day outside, so that when it is their turn to come. And most, and homeless are honest. They say, you know, I came down here from, from New York, and I've only been here a month because my family and I are not talking. If my family and I are not talking, we work on those relationships, and Catholic Charities pays to move them back to New York, or wherever else they came from.
Not for a discussion today, but at some point, what I would be interested in is to, what's the average stay there in a?
114 days. One shelter's 112 days. I think that is 114 right now.
So if you're, if you look at everything, where do they go? I mean, have you done long-term studies to tell us, you know, you get them a job, you get them housing? Do they stay on that? Do they end up at a different shelter? Do they end up in jail? Like, looking at somebody 24, 36 months out, I mean, the services that you're delivering, what's, what's the execution and what's the success rate?
So statistically, across the nation, about 30% coming into an emergency shelter move to permanent housing. Pinellas Hope is right now close to 50%. Tampa Hope is just under that. It teeters between 44% and 46%. We consider permanent housing, only housing that they're moving into and paying rent. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're unsuccessful if they're going to another program. So we do have folks that transition out. We're sending them to drug rehab, mental health services, that they're going to another partner of ours. But if they are moving, a lot of them are moving into Catholic Charities housing that we're continuously building. You know, I have a personal goal, Catholic Charities, we're adding several hundred units every single year. And so our focus is our northern counties, and so most of our next, next three to five years will be us adding units up in the north, which would be Citrus County.
So is your program there to follow that person? Do you assign a network to that person?
Right, so our current case managers are only following them right now, six months and a year out. And those that are moving in, out into housing are still in housing. We don't follow them, just it's a staffing issue, that we don't follow them past that year. But I will tell you that we do periodically, sure, we do have people come back a second, third time, even if we ask them to leave. It doesn't mean that they can never come back. We're the land of second chances. And so as long as they haven't left for an issue of violence, they're welcome to come back and try it again. But again, statistically, if you're looking at the numbers, we're close to 50% are moving out successfully.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrick.
I just wanted to let you know, the person I did talk to, I went over and I was talking to that person for a long time, all by myself, and he said that he had moved from Ohio to Tampa, and that he was there 30 days, and he was hoping to be there approximately another 30, maybe 60 days, till he had enough money saved to get an apartment. And that's who I was talking to.
He may have said that, but I assure you, he didn't move for Tampa.
So the thing is.
I wish I was that cool, but nobody's moving from another state to come to me.
And I don't think he was lying to me when he said it, you know, just like the gentleman that said that the Catholic Church has nine acres in Citrus County that they could build on.
Commissioner Canard.
There are an awful lot of folks out here from our local nonprofits that I know that Day, I'm sure that Daystar currently works with. While we're not going to have a motion on the floor to vote, would the board consider opening up to getting some comments from our other nonprofits? And again, we're just starting the conversation with a great organization. We have a lot of great organizations. I'd like to hear if there's other, other folks took their time to come here today. Let's see what they have to say.
You read my mind, Commissioner Canard.
Commissioner Finnegan, and then we'll, you can sit down, and then we'll let others come up and speak.
To straighten out a few things first, Maggie and Anne Marie, thank you for being here. Any comments at the beginning, obviously, was not anything about the presentation, it was just, we're a little bit under a microscope right now about doing things the right way. So I want to make sure that we continue to do the right, yes. Commissioner Davis had asked for, you know, just to say that you're working with them. I think that that's admirable, and anything that you're doing to help them is all good. I sit on the Board of the Sanctuary Mission. I'd like to think that I'm doing some good there in the same type of work. If that's where your heart's at, I think that's where it should lead you. Now, as far as the funding, I would have to agree with Commissioner Barrick and Commissioner Canard. We've, we've been down that road, and that's going to be a hard thing to untangle, to choose one nonprofit over another. If you're looking to expand your mission, and it falls within, you know, the county guidelines, which that would be with land development, that's just something you're going to do. Personally, if this board wanted to put money behind an issue, I would lean more towards the Housing First model, which, you know, the government stopped giving money to build new shelters, and they said housing first. How do we keep people in their homes? How do we keep them from being homeless? There's some agencies out there doing that work, and that's, you know, that's more where I would be in line with if we ever got to that point. You know, since everything's out there, I haven't been a strong proponent of this, and this does not come as a shock, because I met with Maggie, to hear all the good work that Catholic Charities has done, but it just comes down to just the questions that were asked. How do we make sure they're not coming from other areas? They don't have ID. I do believe in, you know, helping people go to their support system. So yes, people do move from out of state, for whatever reason, to Citrus County, because I had an uncle there, and it all fell apart, or he died, and if I could just get back home. And I know there's some resources out there to get people to their support systems, and I also think that's important. The issue I had was, let me back up. People that hear about something for the first time, and you want to help people, of course, it all sounds very good. But that was my space for much of my life. So none of it's, none of it's a shock to me. I've seen a lot of shelters. I've seen domestic violence shelters and homeless shelters, and I've seen shelters with programs, and they do it different ways. All good for their space, right? The concerning thing was, when we were talking about tents, and it sounds like you might change that, it was 100 tents. And when I explained, of course, people don't understand the 700 and something people from the point in time, they're not all, I saw in an article, that they're living on our streets and in our woods. They're not all living on our street. They're, they're sheltered, they're couch surfing. Not, not that that's ideal, we need to help everybody, but I just don't want people to think that many people's on our streets and in our woods. The issue for me was when we talked about 100 tents, and I said, you know, the path, the sanctuary, some other places, there, there's bed space available. And we talked about this at the strategic planning meeting. People in homelessness are in different stages. There are people who lost their job, got a divorce, in a, in a tough spot, wants to keep working through, they're homeless. Those are the ones that can be captured and either do some rapid rehousing, or go to a shelter and put those wraparound services and get them to permanent housing. That works. Then we have people that are homeless with severe mental illness, or at some, some point of mental illness, or drug issues, and, you know, some are in the woods with drug issues, some are not. They're, there's just different kinds. Some people, I think we can all agree, are not coming in. So when I said, there are people in our woods, we do want to help with that, but there's room at the path, there's some room at the sanctuary, and you told me, if they have beds available, they're doing something wrong, which we completely disagreed about. And it was said, I would never, I would never tell my donors I have an empty tent. So all tents had to be filled, and there always had to be people waiting in the woods. And I feel like that's not a solution. That's just exacerbating a problem. So those people in the woods, we're not in the nonprofit business, but if we can find a way to help them, and that may not be shelter, it may be mental health services, it may be, well, the sanctuary does rehab services, but not everybody wants to work a program. When you talk about wraparound services, because that comes with something that person has to do, a portion of people won't do it. So that, that was my issue. That was my issue. I don't want to create a problem in Citrus County that worsens what we have. Doesn't mean I'm against the work that you're doing. We, we disagree over that issue. Obviously, we'll see how this plays out more. I think it needs to be a community conversation. Absolutely. I think Catholic Charities and Daystar should be part of that conversation. You're, you're also doing important work, but everybody's doing it a little bit different way, and I agree with you, Commissioner. Everyone has to work together, and I, I think we can. It seems like we're not, but I think we are, really. Just sometimes, everybody has the same idea, but your idea of getting there is just a little bit different, and I think we can get there together. So, Madam Chair, thank you.
Sure. I'm going to open it up, and anybody that would like to come and talk about their thoughts or opinions on this topic, please come forward. You will have three minutes.
I came here today just to hear a presentation. My name is George Smallsteg. I'm the President and CEO of United Way of Citrus County. I didn't come to speak today just to listen. I do appreciate the opportunity, though. This does seem like an issue that people want me on the record. So when I go to meetings, just last week, was just asked about this at a meeting. It feels to me, just observing, that it seems like the rubbing point, the sticking point right now, is that there's just not enough information out there. So what I've heard so far today is Commissioner Davis is asking for the opportunity just to continue the conversation. Maybe she needs the blessing of the other four, just want to keep you all informed, whatever the case may be. But regardless of whether Commissioner But regardless of whether Commissioner Davis gets that blessing or not, we need to have a, a community-wide conversation about this. I came because I'm interested. We heard Maggie talk about how Pinellas is different than Tampa, is different than Pasco. Citrus will be different from those. I personally, I don't know what that's going to look like yet, so I'm excited to hear what that plan is. I saw the number, 718 homeless on the screen earlier, and, and that's the number that I was given recently by the Executive Director of Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition. I'm really interested in their perspective on this. They're, they're the experts on this in the community. It's really not me. So I'm interested in what their perspective is. I do know that that director recently said in the newspaper, and she's told me personally, that our homeless in Citrus County is different. It's that life circumstances has led to them being homeless as opposed to substance abuse and mental health. That's her perspective on it. Can you see how that would vastly change the wraparound services that are provided to, to that audience in Citrus County? It would probably look very different than maybe a robust mental health, substance abuse regimen provided to people in Tampa or, or Pinellas. So there's so many differences. I don't know what those differences are, but I can be reached by Catholic Charities and Daystar. They know that. I welcome the conversation and look forward to being a part of that conversation here in the community as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you for being here, George. Next, please.
Deb Spence, Crystal River. I heard about this in the Just Right, Citrus. I have spoken to him many times about homeless and that nothing has happened in this county with the 700 people that are out there. They're all there for different reasons. And we have an influx because of our hurricane. We do not have affordable housing. You have ignored the fact for years, and now that a new organization has come through to say, hey, we have a solution to this, now everybody else is getting on the bandwagon. Where has everybody been all this time? I saw a lot on the internet about anti-Catholic charities bias. And I have to say that I was part of the Hurricane Help Group. I was amazed at the work that Daystar did. I never knew everything they got involved in. And it wasn't until the washing machine showed up with the big sign on the side that says Catholic Charities, I never knew who they were. Because I only knew them as a charitable organization that treated people with dignity and respect that other people in this county don't. We have people who couch surf. We have people who work 40 to 50 hours a week and are still homeless. Why? Would a tent help them? They don't belong in a shelter if they're working. You have no answers. You have no response other than to say no to everything that comes up here. So you need to look very seriously at affordable housing here. Either to have the new developments that come in, have some set-asides for affordable housing. Other countries, other counties and other states do that very well. We have been pushed against the wall by your governor, who has mandated that the people can no longer live in the woods, can no longer be homeless on the streets. He created this problem, and now, seven months later, you now say, oh, geez, somebody might want to do something about this. But we don't know what, so let's study it and study it for another year and a half. I do ask you to please get up off your butts and make a difference and provide housing for the homeless in this county.
Commissioners, Father Ken Malle, pastor in La Canto. Just want to share my story. I'm from Pinellas County, born and raised, and I was a pastor at a local church right next to Pinellas, so from 2005 to 2011. So I was there from the early days, and just to say, it was a joy for me going out there with my team members. And when we started cooking the meals, I'm amazed that 18 years later, collaboratively, they're working with many different other groups in the area. From my own experience, after, after I got out of the Navy, I was in the Navy first, then went to USF for undergrad, but I did one of their programs overseas, and it was overseas when I was in Scotland, that I worked with a homeless shelter. And working in a homeless shelter was part of my vocation to the priesthood, and just getting the experience of working with those in need. As a pastor, when I was at Tampa Hope, I had never been to Tampa Hope before that last bus ride. I saw some photos of some high school students out there serving at the shelter, serving a meal. As a local pastor, I look at a great opportunity of teaching our kids about service. I really believe about, if we want to nurture our youth for excellence and magnanimity, we have to teach them about service and provide opportunities for service when they have to do their service projects. And I remember from Pinellas, Hope, there were great opportunities for service. It was organized, it was planned, and it was safe. So I think the organized, planned, and safe opportunities for service are some things to think about, and I would love to have that in the area, and then see collaboratively how we could work. I also attended the meeting on Friday at the YMCA when they spoke about the Alice population. And I have to say, I'm really happy to be in this community when I got assigned up here by the bishop. So before working here, I was, I had a job, I was working in Vatican City. I got moved Vatican City to Floral City, but I got to come to the Nature Coast here, which I love. So I was a seminarian in Vatican City. I got to work with Mother Teresa and her sisters. And when I worked with, for my first two years, we couldn't come home when I was studying in Rome. So I went, my first job before, I was an interpreter in the Navy, but I went to Russia and I worked in Moscow in a homeless shelter with these sisters. In San Diego, I had my boot camp to become, as a, as a, I was an enlisted guy in the Navy. But when I worked with these sisters that kicked my butt, they taught me how to be generous service to the homeless and love the human dignity of each person. So I worked with them in, in Moscow in a homeless shelter. It changed my life. And just seeing Christ and just doing the ordinary things with extraordinary love, that's just Mother's way. Mother Teresa, and I was blessed, I got to meet with her a few times, just doing ordinary things with extraordinary love. And I see with many of their different missions, how young people from around the world would go and work. My last parish, I was at St. Tim's, and we built a school, Mother Teresa. And she taught me, and I saw many youth working with them, and they keep coming and serving. So I hope to support this in any way, too. God bless you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Susan Gill, retired Supervisor of Elections, 1251 North Annapolis Avenue, Hernando, Florida. Father Malle is my parish priest, and thanks a lot, I'm supposed to follow Mother Teresa and the Vatican City and all this stuff. But you know, I just really, I've never stood here, you know, as a citizen, always a Supervisor of Elections, but I really feel very strongly about this. We have, we have, we love Citrus County. Every one of you there does. All of us here do. You've come to love Citrus County. This is a great place, and we can, we can fix these problems by doing something that all of you have talked about doing, and some of the speakers here have been talking about it, too, and that's getting together and working on the problems that we have. We, I mean, the homeless issue is a big issue, not just in Citrus County, but, you know, in our whole country. These are, these are tight times with, with finances, especially for the people on the lower end of the scale, and as, as George talked about, the Alice people, that, you know, they're just one paycheck away. And so, you know, what Catholic Charities wants to do is just another tool in the toolbox to be able to work with everybody in our community and be able to do the best we possibly can for our people, for our animals, and for our environment. And those are the, the three things that, you know, that are in our world that we want to be able to work on. So just my, my two cents. Thanks.
My name is Kristy Jocelyn, and during the day from 9:00 to 2:00, I am an employee at Daystar Life Center. I am part of those wraparound services that we talk about. But after 2:00, I am the Executive Director of Basics United, and we run the Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter. Over this past season, we were open a total of 30 nights. We served over 207 individuals, 15 of, or 12 of those being children. Out of those individuals who came in, we have polled them, and approximately 75% have said that they would utilize Citrus Hope. One of those people is a gentleman by the name of Billy Wolf. He had extreme scoliosis, bleeding ulcers. He lived in his truck. He was found passed away on March 4th, 4th, in his vehicle. One thing we have found is that the individuals who are on the streets that are out there, when they have health conditions, that exacerbates those health conditions, whether it's high blood pressure, whether it's heart disease, it doesn't matter what it is, when you are sleeping in your vehicle and you are not able to lay the body down and have shelter, to have access away from the sun, have air conditioning, that any health conditions that you have, it just goes downhill. And he's one of those individuals. He's not the, the only individual, but he's the most recent who's on my heart. I guarantee you, he would have absolutely been for Citrus Hope. Also, I want to talk about, one of the things, I'm, thank you Maggie for talking about working with the different organizations. Some things that people don't know is that the shelters that you've mentioned so far, you have two transitional housing programs. You have faith-based organizations that are long-term shelter. So yes, they do wraparound services, but they do it on a long-term basis. Their goal is to hold someone in those shelters for nine months plus in order to work with them to get into housing. They don't work with the grant funding until, if at all, the end of their cycle there. The goal of Catholic Charities and Citrus Hope is to do case management on a daily basis. It is part of the requirement to enter into that shelter, is to do case management every day. One of the things that we find that's difficult with doing outreach and working with people on the streets is that once you find them and you start those things, you can't find them again. I have a stack of mail sitting on my desk for people I've started bus applications, food stamp applications, photo IDs, birth certificates, that I'm waiting to find those individuals again. Having a place like Citrus Hope, you'd be able to locate them because they're going to be there every single day, because they have a safe place to come back to, they know that they have a shower, they can go work jobs, and they can do the things that they need to do in order for you to help them to get on their feet. I could go on and on with a lot of different stories, but I just ask that you open your minds to the different things that are out there. It's not us versus them. It's not one organization versus the other. We can all work together to tackle the 718 identified individuals to help them to get into housing. There's no cookie cutter solution. The answer is housing, but how they get there is going to look different for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. BJ Ezel, and I'm just overwhelmed by not only what I've learned, but what I've seen. I've been a resident of this county now for eight years. I've been in the hospitals, and I've been the Director for Informatics at Citrus Memorial HCA. So I've seen the homeless come through, and that's exactly what they do. They come through and they go back out, and they come back in, and they go back out with really no real hope. And instead of saying, the homeless, they are people. They have souls. They're like me. They bleed red. One of the things that I say, and someone asked me the other day if I would repeat it to them because they wanted to write it down, and you've heard me say it here, we are only as healthy as the least of us is healthy. We live on 200. We came here and we just wanted to scout the territory, so we stayed at, in Canterbury Lake Estates, and you can't even see the houses from the roadway. And that was safety and security. Somebody I know wanted acreage so they could pretend to be a gentleman farmer. So they got their six acres, and I got my custom home. There's a stand of trees in front of our home on 601, on six acres. However, on any given day, you see people that are homeless walking unsafely because there's no sidewalks, and at night, it's even worse, there's no lighting. At first, the homeless that were diagonal from us and right next to the Family Resource Center, there was a little trail going up into the woods. I thought these were bike riders and, and other recreational people doing things. The little path got wider. It got wide enough for a car to go drive up and in it. But now, I'm looking at it, and it's wide enough you could land a plane. I would really just like to thank Sheriff Vincent for one specific officer in particular. Officer Johnny Q came to our residence when I asked to have someone from the Sheriff Department come and speak with us, and she came. I'm looking at her, girl, you're not big as a minute. And she was good. She parked her car, so she knew she could get off our property. Our property has no trespassing signs. It has a gate. It has a stand of trees, so if you come on our property, you're there because we invited you. Just the other day, someone with a bicycle had put their bike right up next to our home, at the house, knocked on the door, and was asking for some arbitrary kind of help. They could have been casing the place, I don't know. Officer Q listened to what we had to say about the homeless in our area. She left us, and in 20 minutes, she called back.
Finish that, please.
Oh, thank you. She called back to say she had talked to the owner of the property, and they had gotten those people trespassed. And they moved from place to place. They're still in the woods. I don't represent an organization. I'm a citizen. I need you to take this on, take the conversation on with an open mind. I'm not here to just talk. I'm here to participate, find a solution.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Vendito, Executive Director for Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition. I wanted on the record that I was sitting way back there, and I was going to sit there and keep my mouth shut this whole meeting, but I keep coming up. So, so I'll give you my two cents. I know the community thinks at large that I'm against the tent city. I'm actually not. I have worked in Pinellas County and in Hillsborough County when both were starting. I have seen the good they have done in the communities, and I'm all for it. The issue we have here in Citrus, and you heard Maggie say it herself, they have 2,000, 2,000 rent-controlled units available to them. They're moving people into their tents, and then they're moving them into their housing. They have 18 units in Citrus County. That means when we're moving our chronically homeless into these tent cities, that's where they're going to stay, because we don't have the housing. We don't have an end game. That's the problem, right? It's about that forward thinking. It's about building those properties that allow us not to be tax credit, where a year from now, when the developer sells, it goes back to full rent. But actual rent-controlled properties, where we actually have a place where people can go. I'll be honest, in the last 10 days, I've had two come into my office. They were brought to me by law enforcement. One of them, Commissioner Davis talked about earlier. These were elderly individuals, elderly individuals. One had just been released from prison. She had been released from prison and transferred straight to the hospital because she was suffering, suffering from significant dementia that had never been diagnosed. She did not know what state she was in. She didn't remember. She had family. She didn't know anything. She was totally lost. Through a bunch of phone calls and through all kind of random connections, we finally found her daughter, who was driving down here to pick her up. Because we had the connections, because we could verify that there was someone coming to get her, she did not have to sleep that night in the street. She was able to stay at Casa for the couple nights it took for her daughter to get here. Under normal circumstances, she would have had no place to go, and even if we'd have had Citrus Hope, she would not have been there. She would have been left on the street. We could have helped her apply to Citrus Hope, but she would have had to wait till she got an invitation. At the latest, seven days from when she was brought into me, would have been the earliest she could have gotten to a tent. And physically, she was in a wheelchair. She could not have slept in a tent, but we wouldn't have had that worry, because honestly, she wasn't physically capable of living on, surviving on the streets. The next one came just a couple days ago.
Oops, sorry.
I'll make it short. I'll be quick. This elderly person came to us straight from the, from the hospital. She was taken to the hospital and released. They gave her three nights at a hotel. The hotel then kicked her out, nowhere to go. Nowhere to go. Had never been homeless, had no idea what to do, had no idea where to go, and didn't remember any phone numbers to get to anyone to help her. Again, she was elderly. She... phone numbers to get to anyone to help her. Again, she was elderly. She was not physically capable of surviving on the street, let alone sleeping on the street, and there was no place in Citrus County for her to go. None.
Thank you.
It's rough. What you need is two things, and we're working on it. You need a low-barrier emergency shelter, which allows a place for a few nights for people in these situations. Not the hardcore homeless that are used to being on the streets, but the, the emergency ones, right? The new family with kids that have just found themselves evicted and have nowhere to go.
I'm sorry. You're over time. Thank you.
And you need affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
I didn't really anticipate coming to speak.
Sorry about that.
I guess I'm done. I really didn't anticipate coming to speak today, but yeah, I just had to get up in line because as I'm listening to this and listening to everyone that is speaking about it, the chamber, we, I didn't even say my name, but you know who I am. We supplied buses for the two tours is basically what our role was. And I was just amazed at the number of people in our community that wanted to get on those buses to spend a full day seeing what the Hope, Tampa Hope and Pinellas Hope do. We've got a lot of good organizations here that do a lot of good things for people. We need options, and this is another option. This is another tool that we can have if we can do something like this. I think there's a need for many different types of groups. We have, as George said, and as others have said, people have different needs. We've got individuals. We've got families. We have children. Each one deserves to have the dignity, to have an opportunity, to make the most of their talents. And we have a lot of need for the talents of people who are homeless. They can be productive citizens. Sometimes they just need that extra opportunity. And what the Hope model is, provides so much dignity for our citizens. So I'd just like you to consider it. As I say, we've got a lot of good organizations, but we need options, and this is another good one. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board on this subject better? Seeing none, we're going to close that portion. Um, I really appreciate everybody coming out today. I appreciate your input. As you know, I've kind of worked on the behavioral health component of this for the last two and a half years. I know it's an issue. I guess my, my passion is really kids because I think that's our future, and we've got to do a really good job when, I think yours, um, when I think, I'm going to be 63, and when I think about growing up and what it was like, there was a nucleus of family. And what's happened today is families have become disjointed. They're living all over the United States. They, they, nobody can rely on each other as a family anymore, and I think it's that breakdown of the family unit that's created much of this. And I detest these things that we have. I think they've become babysitters for our children, and parents aren't parenting anymore sometimes. Not everybody, but a lot of it. I think they're spending way too much time on this technology, and they're not sitting down at the dinner table and finding out, what was your day like? And I really hope that as, I guess that's my hope as a community. I hope that we get back to be in a community and being families. Anybody else? Thank you all for being here. All right. The next presentation is an update on the building division fee schedule.
Ready for me?
I am ready for you.
Chair Commissioners, Eric with Growth Management. Good news, I don't have a presentation, so this should be really brief. Back in December, you looked, you approved some updates to the building fee schedule, but that requires to be done as by resolution in order to be adopted. So that's what we have here today. It's, nothing has changed since December since you've seen it and approved it, and it was also recommended for approval by the Advisory Board. So nothing has changed since December, other than the fact that it needs a resolution to be adopted.
Motion to approve the updated fee schedule.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further discussion? Should I take public? I'd like to open it up to the public. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this issue, please come forward.
Dennis Bailey, I own Bailey Electric and Signs. So we just adopted this fee schedule? Well, to be adopted fee schedule that I just got paid to do? I had permits rejected. I had permits, oh, sorry. We put in for an electric car charger. It's an outlet in the garage. New fee schedule, which was never on the fee schedule, $150, $175 to put that outlet in. They said it was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. The county commissioner, or the building department is using the new fee schedule already. Took me a little while to fight that one because they're talking about freestanding car chargers, not somebody's house putting an outlet in for a car charger. I'm a little upset about that now. I came here for something else, and now I find out that, yeah, we're doing a fee schedule that has not been approved. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Landed, would one of you like to address that?
If an error was made, we can certainly refund the gentleman if the error was on his behalf. I don't know about a specific building permit, but we'd be happy to resolve any problem that may have come up.
Has, was the fee schedule implemented prior to this?
Not that I'm aware of, but like, we'd be happy to investigate and find out if an error was made. We'll fix it.
All right. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, did you want to, do you want to speak on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Uh, we're moving in one ahead. Um, one second to pull it. No, we moved in one to the.
Is there a problem with me moving in one? That's what we voted on after this?
I think y'all already voted on that.
In, no, in one.
I think you voted when you adopted the agenda. This was regarding the appropriations project request 491 from Pine Ridge Boulevard to State Road 41. Um, on here is the board discussion to ratify the signature of the county administrator, Steve Howard, as the regulatory responsibility for supervising the management administrative projects on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners for appropriations received. I know there's been a lot of what I would consider to be chatter about this, and I guarantee you, uh, that in my opinion, there was, if there was anything, it was a miscommunication. I was approached by representative of the Southern Group that said, we represent the Metro Development Group, and that they would like to request funding for 491 to help us get, get some additional funding. There was, as we all know, 491 has been a source that's been on our radar for a very long time. I called Steve Howard, and, and he and I discussed with Walt Eastman, and this is what I'm going to say about it. The fact remains that County Road 491 is a priority of Citrus County. It's been in our book. It wasn't an appropriations request, but it was on our agenda as a priority of the county evidenced. By such, I would go on to tell you that in August of 2024, the governor came to Citrus County in a full press court and delivered a check from the job growth grant fund for $2.8 million. That request never came before this board, and it would never came before this board to accept those dollars. I went on to look, um, what was said at that meeting, and, um, the gentleman that is head of the Enterprise Florida, lived in this county some 20 years ago, and what he said that day, he said, you know, this is a, an injection into this county that is much needed for the job growth, the high wage that it will bring to this county. People are making this out to that, I don't know, whatever you want to make it out to be, but it, I can tell you righteously, I do whatever I think is in the best interest of my citizens. If somebody wants to hand our citizens a check to help fund a project that we're staring down the barrel today for $180 million, and typically speaking, you're on the hook for 50% of that, and if somebody wants to try to help give us some funding to get over that hump, you bet, I'm all ears. I'm interested every day. Was the process a little muddled? Maybe we should have communicated better, but at the end of the day, nobody did anything wrong. We were asking, we didn't ask, I shouldn't say that, we weren't asking. We were approached by somebody else that wanted to provide funding to help along this process. It's not ever going to get any cheaper. There's seven miles of road, and it's right now, we know what the inflation did to us on the section of 491 that's being funded right now, and we lost out on something really good many years ago on that 491. We lost out on master drainage. We lost out on the opportunity for the last section to be six lanes. It will always be four lanes. We're playing catch-up. We know that Cardinal Lane needs to be four-laned. We know that 495 is going to need to be four-laned. We know that we're looking at Rock Crusher. We've got transportation projects all over this county that there is no possible way we're going to get across that hump without help. So my apologies, if I got out over my skis. I was excited about the opportunity that somebody wanted to hand us money or help find money for us, but that's what I can tell you. And I've never done anything that, that I would want to put this county in harm or jeopardize. And I can tell you, I get up and I look in the mirror every day righteously and know that my goal is to leave Citrus County a place for the future of our kids and our grandchildren, whoever comes many years past us. I want them to have the best Citrus County, and that's the only mistake I ever made.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
I applaud your efforts in trying to find money and trying to partner with other folks to help find the money because you are exactly right. We have a mountain of not only road resurfacing work to do, but capacity work to do, infrastructure projects. The, my only concern with this has been you've got four, four people sitting up here with you that want to partner with you and, uh, help you to be successful in that. And so my only, my only comment would be, bring us along. You're the chair. We're here to support you.
And honestly, it would, had I have known it was going like that, it wasn't something that I, again, it was like when the governor came here and gave us a $2.8 million check. It never came before this board. It didn't, it didn't come before this board prior to getting it, and it didn't come before this board to accept it because it was being given and offered by somebody else. Had I have thought something different, I wasn't, I, in the mix of all of that, it was just, hey, here it is. And I know that there was information that needed to be given, but outside of that, that's, I tried to go back and make a timeline. It was as simple as that. Oh my God, I, I've even gone back and tried to look through every phone call, if there was a text, because I've been, I've asked, been asked for a public records request. There's, there's no conspiracy.
I don't believe there is. I don't believe you've done anything nefarious.
It was simply, if we're, if we need $180 million. And I want to share this. I mean, we're talking about it as a board. I mean, we talk about this all the time. We know that Pine Ridge is not fully developed. We know that Citrus Springs is not fully developed. We know that there's another development coming there at Tuscany. We know that, that there is a, a big project looking at Holder, Holder Industrial, that has the opportunity to deliver a lot of jobs, a lot of economic development for this community. We don't know when or where or what that's going to be necessarily, but we know that that's going to be a major injection. We know that the 200 Bridge is being looked at by District Seven. We know that by our consultants that we work with at the MPO, that all of that, all of it, 200 Bridge and 200 is going to need to be six-lane. It is coming. We're not stopping it. And we have failed, we have failed as a community to get ahead of all of this because we simply have never had the money. And I would invite any of you to go look at the appropriations that are given out through the counties across this state. Have we gotten our fair share? I'd like to say no when I look at the amounts of money that are passed out. I even spoke to Mr. Howard. Oh my goodness gracious. I went on and I looked at Ridge Road off of, um, the Sun Coast Parkway with the Moffett Center. They're getting a year-over-year appropriation of $30 million. $30 million of appropriation, year-over-year. That's a lot of money. We've never even begun to ask for anything like that. I'm sad that Commissioner Kennard's boat ramp's not getting 10 million because that is a regional project. But it is what it is. I, all I can do is tell you, I messed up. I'm sorry. I don't know. Give me 50 lashings with a wet noodle. Madam Chair? Commissioner Barrett?
All right. Um, I try to follow rules, okay? And they're black and white. They're easy to follow. So in doing so, this lovely book came out on Thursday, and I'm sure the other commissioners got their copy. This was printed, and it had to have been printed before Thursday, and it says that under section to request for special consideration, number four, La Canto Highway 491, expansion to 200. Okay. So when were these things discussed that were in this book? And I went back, and December the 17th was when we had the Commissioners' meeting for what we wanted to do as Commissioners, elected officials of the county, what we wanted to do, what we were going to push forward to the legislature, okay? It was not one of the ones that we pushed forward. It was, you know, something for consideration down the road. And we did, we did discuss it, and I bet if you remember, you think about December, we discussed it because it is extremely important to us. It's my district, 491 to 200, and part of Mrs. Davis's district, because that's where the people are going to be coming. Metro Forecasting said that's where the people are coming. We need to do something. However, there are, like I was told for 14 years, rules and regulations. I go up there and I got a three-minute, or if I was for one of the... I go up there and I got a three-minute, or if I was for one of the representative for another organization, I got five minutes. At that point, I had to stop. And I live with that because there are rules. To me, going to Steve Howard was okay because he's our administrator, but having him take the next step, going to and filling out forms to the state and sending them is an administrative overstep. And at that point in time, he was not an elected official, and I don't think he still is. I think he is just an employee. And I would really like to see that we do something, and it's hard to say, but I would like to see that Mr. Howard is terminated for overstepping his authority.
Absolutely outrageous.
And doing something. Please don't interrupt me. That's not fair. I have asked for the floor and, and people need to understand, I feel that he has overstepped his administrative duties in sending this out. The paperwork shows clearly, the dates on these things, you know, it says February stuff was sent, March stuff was sent. We didn't even go to our own state representative with this. We went to the state representative and it came from the state representative of Pasco County. We don't live in Pasco County, we live in Citrus County. And I'm sorry, but to me, you know, all these years of, you learn the rules, you practice the rules, you follow the rules, I have to sit here every week and wait my turn, and I do, I try and be nice. And to, to, to say that we can just overstep this and not do anything about it is wrong. What are the people going to say? You know, we represent the people. He's our employee. He's not the representative of the people. He is an employee of our administration. Now, I may only be one at this point, but I'm still going to say, he needs to be terminated and needs to be immediate.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan.
I could have predicted it going this way, but then I, I'm a little disappointed. I thought there would be more of a mea culpa than a, than a doubling down with a, with a half-hearted sorry. We're not doing government right. This was a major mistake, but listen, you all were 4-1 against me. I didn't think the way we did the Barge Canal was correct because we were asking, I want to say it was 7.3 million, and it went to 10, which sounds like, just ask a little more, it's not that big of a deal. But when you're talking about bonding money, and there's no agenda item, there was no discussion for the public, that's wrong. That's just doing government. And I must have used the term bad governance like five times that day, but the board wanted to go in a different direction and I went along. So I want to, I want to help unpack this for everybody and then people can make their own opinions. Because I'll, I'll tell you from one commissioner's standpoint, how, how this all shook out for me. I'm a little disappointed if other commissioners didn't do some digging because we are responsible. We are responsible for at least our staff. I think Commissioner Bayes will be responsible to the public, that's, you know, we can share our opinions, but, but we are responsible about our staff. So Friday, a week ago, we get from our lobbyist, which is not the lobbyist in question here that was working with Steve Howard and Commissioner Bayes, updates. And of course, I could see the Senate budget and the House budget, so I clicked on it, Halls River, yay, you know, we've got a million dollars, we're staying alive, and looked and saw some other community partners, saw like Jesse's Plays, I want to say that's the one YMC was in. And then I saw 491 expansion. And at that point, I had just said, hmm, I'm going to need to talk to Steve about that. I must be missing something. I don't know how this happened. And I was busy, didn't give it a lot of thought. I knew I would see him the next week. The weekend came, I knew I would see him Tuesday because I was to serve at the employee barbecue. Well, before I could get that all shook out, before I could see him, that moved to the top of the list of things I wanted to talk to him about because everyone was saying, did you read a blog? Did you read a blog? No, I didn't read a blog. Oh, it's a big deal, that, you know? And I thought, well, that's interesting because I had the same question Friday. So I did see Steve that day and I asked him, what, what's going on? I saw this, I still haven't read a blog. He told me that he signed a form just making us responsible to accept the money. And that didn't make sense to me. And I said to, you know, to accept the money, somebody had to sign a form. And finally, after kind of round and round, he said, oh, that's when he said I signed a form, it was to accept the money. And I did say, and you'll remember, if you did all this and didn't bring it to the board, shame on you. And then we kind of, he said he signed for that. I took it at, at that value at that point, more conversation, other people were around. I left. That day, when I finally got home, I looked at the attestation form on the, then I started looking at the Senate page and the House page and it didn't drive. It wasn't, it was not a form, it was an application made by the county. So that I questioned, and I think I told you, I want to see all the, whatever paperwork, I don't know what's going on, whatever paperwork, I'd like to have it by the end of the week. And you said yes. So because that didn't line up for me, I did a public records request. So I, I could just get some answers. So I'm going to unpack this a little bit and maybe you want to fill in some blanks. And maybe that will clear things up. Maybe it'll make it worse, I'm not sure. Okay, so the very first email I could see was that Laura Beamer from the Southern Group, who is a lobbyist, not our lobbyist, for a development called Metro Development that is applying for Tuscany Ranch. She asked one of our employees to fill out a form. It went just like, you fill in the guts, I'll fill in the contact information. Now, that was on 2/5. So the first question, of course, I had, if that's the first thing I could find anywhere, somebody's already been talking about this for quite a while. It doesn't reach that level of staff to fill out paperwork if there's not been conversations, if he's not been directed to do so. It, it wouldn't be like, hey, you already know what to do, send it back. On the 10th, he, he filled it out. Something that Steve had said to me, which I found could be accurate, was that paperwork was sent to him and he was kind of hounded for it and you, you finally sent it in. So on February 19th, Steve was asked by Ruthie Schleba, former commissioner, now lobbyist for the Southern Group, to fill out this form. Another ask on 2/26, sent again on March 5th. And then that's when you signed it, Steve, on March 5th. The problem in that, it was said that you didn't realize who signed the form, we were shocked, you know, that the county's name was on it. But on the 5th, before you signed it, she did attach the House form to J.J. Grow, which had the employee's name all over it. So take that for what you will. I'm, I'm just unpacking it right now. There was a conference call on February 28th. It was between Ruthie Schleba, Laura Beamer, and Steve Howard. So obviously, it was a Microsoft Teams meeting that happened, the email was on 2/28, I believe the Teams meeting was on March 3rd. And there was also a conference call from our employee with Ruthie Schleba on March 3rd. So all of this is, all of this is going on. I also called our representatives and I asked Representative Grow, do you mind me asking, who asked you to do this? Now, I, I'm not looking, it's not like I was looking for anything, I just felt responsible, our county staff is involved in something, the people are not happy, it's my job to figure this out. And he told me that Commissioner Bayes and the Southern Group asked. So in my head was that you, Commissioner Bayes and Commissioner Schleba, or former commissioner? I mean, it was you and somebody. Okay, all right. So it was the Southern Group. And of course, Senator Angolia had no idea about any of this. And subsequently, his name wasn't on it, it was Senator Burgess. Give me a minute, like I said, there's a lot. So there, there's a few issues here. One would be that a commissioner and our staff was working on something without this board. I think we all can agree with that, that, that should never happen. I will let Mr. Howard walk us through that later. Subsequently, after finding all of this, I still didn't get the paperwork that I had asked for. So I could not email, I was helping out a family for two days, driving most of the time and, and meetings. So during some driving, I made a phone call to Steve again and said, hey, I didn't get the paperwork, I have a few emails. And I said, it's not necessary at this point. But I did have some questions. One, why did you finally sign it on the 5th? And he said, Commissioner Bayes asked him to, to do that at that point. Why didn't you bring it before the board at some point? And I was told by Mr. Howard that he wanted to bring, and I'll let you unpack this later, but your words to me was, you wanted to bring it to the board, but you were told and I couldn't tell, I don't remember, because we were kind of back and forth, if it was Commissioner Bayes or the Southern Group told you, not necessarily, not necessary, it's dead in the water, you're not getting funding. So obviously, that wasn't true either. The forms were a complete mess. Who, I, I don't know, this, this group, this Southern Group has not acted well in any of this. The, the lobbyist name that's on it is David Browning. He is in no emails at all lobbying our staff, not at the meetings. It was Ruthie Schleba and Laura Beamer on everything. I already told you about when they signed. So when our staff filled out the paperwork, it was actually, when he was asked, what, what is this project? It was $67.1 million. The PD and EN design was $11.1 million. The right-of-way, the legal and acquisition was $56 million. The purpose of the request states all of the above in the second one, the one that was actually submitted by the Southern Group, but it only shows $3 million. So on the Senate form, it lists the start date of construction as July 1, 2025, and says it'll, it will be completed by June 30th, 2026. Not sure how that's going to happen. On the Senate form also, what funding can be used in lieu of state funding? They put, in lieu of state funding, we'll just use our county road fund and our gas tax. Right, we know that can't happen. Now, the House form states that we will ask for over $10 million in the next five years, but it says we only need one year to complete the project. The Senate form states that we will ask for $3 million each year. The House form states that the project was presented and supported by the Board of County Commissioners at their regular meeting. That never happened. The House form, instead of checking general population, random subsets of people, I'm not sure what that was about. Also, to my surprise, including in this project, is a five-foot sidewalk and a 12-foot multipurpose path. That was surprising to me. So both of the forms were a complete mess from, from this organization. Other notes of interest, I'm just putting it all out there, everyone can make what they want. It looks like with the Southern Group, our legislative aide, James Toy responded to attend one of their legislative kickoff events. I'm not sure why our staff is going to a lobbyist event that doesn't have anything to do with Citrus County and has, and we don't hire them. That was a point of interest to me. It looks like Ms. Schleba was lobbying Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Bayes about the PACE program, making sure that Chris had time at the podium, also sending them various information about that and about some other things, on and off again. Yeah, and I have the dates of all that, but we don't need to get into all that, those were just points of, points of interest. So all of that is bad enough, and I'll tell you why. Because like I said, commissioners and staff should not be acting without board approval. The second is, and I know you doubled down on this, but how, how can any of us as board members work with a lobbyist of a developer with an open application before the meeting? So now, we're going to hear from Metro Development at some point, this board is going to, and to the public, it already looks like it's a done deal. Like we've, we, we want this so bad, not we, but it looks like we, because let me tell you, I, and I hope we all want to do government the right way, but one of us, if one of us messes up, it's all of us. We're all in this together. There's public distrust for each one of us right now. That's why I feel like I'm just going to unpack this and the public will make some of their, their own decisions on, on how they feel about this. But I'm not sure what we do about that. I, I don't think that should ever happen. And county, county staff, I know it's hard because, you know, land development does work with them, but commissioners, we should never be stepping outside and working in any way with people trying to make application to do things here. So for me, I was like, you know, I was ready to unpack this. I had went away, I came back. It almost got from bad to worse because I thought, okay, we'll, we'll, I'll unpack this, we'll, we'll see how it all plays out. I asked for an update to my public records request because then I saw in the Chronicle, kind of like this doubling down and a quote from the county. And I'm thinking, okay, everything that's supposed to be from the Board of County Commissioners was not from the Board of County Commissioners and it was inaccurate. So I thought, well, where the heck did they get that? Did they go on their own and get this? Or so I did, I asked for an update on my public records request with all the existing names, but please add Mike Bridges because that's our public information officer to see what happened here. So that did come from Mr. Bridges. And I printed that out, but what's interesting, he sent that to a Chronicle reporter, but then forwarded it to James Toy, which is our government liaison. Not, not sure what that's about. It was, and it says, statement from Citrus County B O C C, that's us, it, it's not our statement. The county was approached by the Southern Group and Metro Development Group, never found anything in any of my emails that even mentions Metro Development Group, it all was the Southern Group, with a proposal to assist in securing state funding for the expansion of Crystal, or County Road 491. At that time, we informed that MDC, Metro Development, must be company, would be the applicant on record in the House and Senate and the B O C C would be the recipient of the funds from the state. Southern Group may have said that, but I don't know when the, everyone started talking because everybody was talking long before our county employee got the form to fill it out and knew to do so. There was no him asking about it, there was no, it, it was already a done deal for him to do this. So first of all, not from the board, we had no idea. And then it says, we were surprised to see that the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners was named on both the House and Senate request forms. But we weren't surprised because we didn't know, and that would have been, Mr. Howard, you were surprised, but you couldn't have been because the county employee's name was all over the form before you signed it. Which was not filled in by our county employee again, it was filled It was filled in by the Southern group. The county employee actually put Senator Angolia's name at the top, realizing that's who it would go to. It was all changed. And the budget was changed, obviously to the three million, which is interesting because they kept it still for the PD and C and Design, which the county employee had at eleven point one million dollars, and then they put it for three. But then elsewhere in the program, it still said it was for a right-of-way acquisition. These forms were terrible. I, I don't, I don't know how the, the Southern group's getting money or how they're filling out their forms, but it was the biggest mess I've seen. County Road 491, a critical evacuation route, as well as an area prime for substantial commercial residential growth, is on the list of the county's legislative priorities for 2025. True, but why didn't I get this before going to Tallahassee or afterwards? This looks like a hurry up and print this very beautiful thing. It's very nice, by the way, whoever put it together. It was a little late. And I remember we had three legislative priorities to ask for money, for appropriations. The rest we understood, like septic to sewer and other, we understood that would be, hey, if there's grants available, we need to go after it. If there's a grant available for the widening, for septic to sewer, for, we had a list of things, go get it, right? For grant funded, not, not for the appropriations. So that's where I have a question that would be for our administrator, because where, where did our public information officer get this information and why was he allowed to put this fictitious information out there? Because when I read the paper, I was like, what is going on? This is not accurate. Then worse. I'm not sure why. We got, we got an email, all of us got it from a private citizen highlighting his grave concerns about everything. He had concerns, he had opinions, and it looks like Commissioner Bayes forwarded that to Mr. Howard and then to Mr. Toy and asked to talk about it. Now oddly enough, today's only Tuesday, so yesterday, I have not talked to Mr. Toy in probably months. I get a call from him, seeing a very positive article highlighting my efforts in Home Asasa in the Citrus County Chronicle, and just wanted to know, hey, is there anything I could do to help? Which was, which was nice, but hinted around about, oh, you know, tomorrow, what's going on? I wasn't saying much, so I said, well, you keep bringing it up. What's your involvement? And no, no, I, I didn't have any involvement at all. And I said, well, you're the governmental affairs liaison? No, no, I said, okay. I said, nothing, nothing else recently, no. I found out everything when you did, which that, that could be true. But Commissioner Bayes had not only sent that to him, it was discussed, I guess, that he writes something up. I'm not, I'm not sure why. And Commissioner Bayes sent it to Mr. Howard. I don't want to mince words. Steve, James indicated that he would like me to send the following out under my name, and I wanted to check to see if you are okay with that. Again, there were some problems with it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. As you're aware, the county was approached by Metro, Metro Development Group. I still have the question of when? Beginning of February, it was sent to our staff. How long has this been going on? Last year, January? I don't know, but there was plenty of times to tell the rest of us about it. Then it says, throughout our discussions with the Southern group, there were a lot of discussions. Obviously a lot by phone, text, other communication. It was not in public email at all. Commissioner Bayes actually had zero communications with, with any, any emails about this. Again, we were surprised to learn, but we, we know that, that wasn't accurate. The Citrus County Board of County Commissioners stands ready to do whatever is necessary to address the situation. We are fully committed to working collaboratively, and it, and it goes on. I hope this wasn't sent out because we didn't talk about it yet. So again, I'm looking at our county staff's involvement. So that's Mr. Howard. That's Mr. Bridges. That's Mr. Toy. Where did they get all this information? We have our public, somebody has to feed the, the information to Mr. Bridges. And if Mr. Toy had no involvement until now, somebody had to give him all of this information when it was discussed, whether that was Commissioner Bayes or Mr. Howard. It just, it just doesn't look good. And for us, obviously, I don't want to browbeat anybody, and like I said, we, I think Commissioner Bayes knows that, obviously, we're, I would hope that we would all agree that we're not happy with this. And you said, you know, we would do it differently. But we do need to, we need to make it very clear that this can never happen. And then we need to decide, there's more questions, maybe, I don't want to make any suggestions yet, but I will say ratifying a name today? Absolutely not. We, the end cannot justify the means. Damage has been done. I think that it's, it's ugly, right? Do you think I like sitting up here and talking about any, any of this at all? With a commissioner that, you know, we're, we all sit with, with a administrator that publicly I have said what a wonderful job he's been doing over and over again? No, of course not. It's uncomfortable, but the entire county has taken a black eye for this. We have a senator that is not happy and rightly so. We have public that doesn't trust us, and that's terrible. We are elected officials, and I want that public trust. That is why I'm the one unpacking this. So it's not easy because if anyone starts stirring about, oh, you know, trying to make light of it, guess, guess who's going to probably get the worst of it? Not anybody messed up, it'll probably be me, I'm sure. And that's okay. I owe it to the public to at least unpack this for you, and you can make your own decisions from there. That's fine. But on the next, the next meeting, Madam Attorney, just making sure you're, you're paying attention to this because I am going to request from you, I had written down a motion, but I think that's probably more appropriate that I'm just going to say in two weeks at our next board meeting, I'm going to bring up a motion to make. And it's going to, I want you to help me draft it to make sure everything is said correctly legally. We did an ordinance that this board for board approval that prohibits any commissioner or county staff from assisting developers and/or their lobbyists with lobbying efforts when the developer has a pending application with Citrus County or when the B O C C has voted against the project. I'm not ready yet because I think that we need to even broaden that beyond developers because I'm, in my head, I think that there could be other people that want things and lobbyists, and it may come before us, and I want to talk to you more about that. But I want this board to be ready to vote for that. That, I think, is one step in winning public trust. I think we, we have a, a long way to haul, but to pretend like this didn't matter, to pretend like we, if it's a gift, we should just take it. It's not a gift. Whatever money comes, we're talking about bonding. We're talking about not giving the people a right to talk about it. And I, for one, am, am pretty angry about that. Now, to Commissioner Barrick's point about losing some faith in our administrator, he should know what he's signing. I agree with that, but before this day, not this day, before, let's just say Tuesday, before, I would have given Mr. Howard glowing remarks. Do I think you messed up? I'm sorry, I do. That this cannot go unnoticed. But one commissioner, in my opinion, I feel like a letter should be drafted and put in a personnel file with the clear understanding that if this ever happens again, that that would be cause for termination. I spent many years in private business, not government business, and if I had a glowing employee that I was very happy with, and if that person did something so egregious that I would really have to sit down and reprimand short of theft, hurting someone, you know, I would, I would probably just want to do a write-up. I would want to document that, work with that person, show the error of that person's ways, and move on to hope it never happens again. So I am sorry to be the one to, to talk about discipline in that way. I think the people of Citrus County want to know that we are taking this seriously. And that, that, that's where I stand on that.
I can make a comment if that's possible. So, and I, I don't have a problem with that. This would never happen again, but I want you to be able to see it through my eyes. So I had three documentations that I got. I think you've, you've, it wasn't probably by, by design, but there was another document that the records request you would have seen. And I just pulled these over the weekend because I haven't had a chance to look at it. But the, the first one I got actually said to help expedite a leadership fund request. So again, it's consistent with what Chairman Bay said. The second email I got, sign it, I'll show you the money. The last one I got is the following one. Did you sign the attestation form? All you are signing is that you accept the money. Citrus County is not asking for it, and it won't take away from any transportation projects. That's what I was getting, continuously getting that, that, that's what that was. And it was, I was under, I signed that under misrepresentation. I didn't prepare the documents for that, I apologize. Take full responsibility for. But again, I feel like there's lessons learned. When you read that, to begin with, expedite a leadership fund request, that's telling me something totally different that I'm hearing up here today. And when somebody sends me before I sign a document at the end, telling me, all you are signing is that you will accept the money. Citrus County is not asking for it, and it won't take away from any transportation projects. That's what I knew. That's what I did, and I apologize for that, but I did what I had in front of me. That's what I, what happened. I would tell you also, my philosophy is to tell the truth, so you don't have to remember what you said. So what I'm telling you is honest, the truth. If I knew the end of this would be like this, I'd be clapping for getting money. You think I want to keep secrets? I had no, nothing about the senator. No one came to me and called me and said, hey, I'm going this other route. Matter of fact, this lobbyist, I don't know how, they're maybe the good folks and everything. They work within this county too. I didn't have that knowledge. Maybe I was naive, but I was hearing that same story. It was consistent with the documentation I had before me. I didn't meet with them very often, other than at the end, they wanted to get a signature. I have three times where they tried to do it. This is a, you could, these are the public records.
Mr. Howard is correct in that. He, I, I have verification of those emails that, that were sent to you like that. He is right in other counties. I think they've tried to pull a, a fast one in Pasco and maybe, maybe another county. I think there's something out there right now, and their commissioners are probably getting the same surprise that we got. So I don't find that, that this group is really operating on the up and up at this time.
I think as a, you know, this is not to interrupt, but as, as a whole, whether I'm your county administrator for the next thirty seconds, or the next three months, or the next three years, you need a better process. These attestation forms have never come before this board. That, on my knowledge, at least looking, I went back and looked because I wanted to do a little study. And even with the former lobbyists that we had, there never was really attachments. They were asking me to sign things. So you're signing things. When I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the paragraph, which actually does end up in there. And whoever gave you those, those documents, those were printed back when you went to Tallahassee. So it is maybe misleading that they were just giving this out, trying to persuade. As far as the newspapers, I'd have to have discussions with Mike on that. But I think it's consistent with what I had heard through these documentation, that's what was going on. You know, actually, it was going to come back before the board. We had conversations, me and the chair. I was told this wasn't even going to happen at that point, it was a mute issue. And then I find out from a phone call that all of a sudden some senator or something, which I couldn't get him in a lineup. I don't even know who this Burgess is, quite honestly. I would not know who he was and wouldn't have known they would have done that. So I had no involvement in those things. So I take responsibility, meaning, you know, for misunderstanding, apologize for those things. But I was missed, I didn't understand those circumstances.
So just for clarification, when were you told that it wasn't going to happen and you don't need to take it before the board?
It was a few days after the signature. I think I did a call or two, and we were talking about, actually talked to Commissioner Bayes about kind of bringing this forward. We talked about that. Then it was like, what was going on in Tallahassee and different things like that? Everything was vetoed. So it seemed like that's, that was a flavor and it just didn't happen.
Who told you that you don't need to bring it before the board?
What was it? I think it was the, the conversation, there was two, one was another one with the Southern group to talk about how much the price of this project was and how much maybe more you'd need, but then it was seed money and those kind of things. But I think it was conversations with them.
And was there any conversation about bringing it to this board in January or February?
I have no knowledge of it being worked at that point. I, I didn't get involved really.
Your employee, your employee filled it out on February 5th.
I have no, I didn't, I didn't see him fill it out. I didn't, I mean, I didn't have that, no, I'm sorry.
You, you had to green light him before then. I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, how did this not come to us?
Yeah. I didn't green light it. I mean, that's what I tell you, it wasn't, I didn't get a phone call and someone said, fill this, Steve, can I fill this paperwork out? That didn't happen.
I'm sure it didn't. So we're not going to get answers on everything. There obviously was a lot of phone calls and things that aren't, aren't in public record. And honestly, board, that part sickens me. It, it really does. So I feel like our last board was toxic, and it was a lot of behind the scenes. And I think this board, I thought this board was working really hard to get rid of all of that. Commissioner Kennard just gave a perfect example of that. He did not go work on a park project and try to, try to figure it out. He said, hey, this is what I want to do. I want your blessing. I, I want to go after money, but I, I want board support. Good job, we got it. I did not like how we were asking our homeowners to pay for septic to sewer. The very first thing I said when I was asking questions to Mr. Cheek and Mr. Howard to work on this, I need to bring this before the board first. And we did that. That, that's how we should be doing government. I'll, I'll be done for now, but somebody had Walt fill out the paperwork. Somebody had Mike Bridges given the information to go to the Chronicle. And my guess is with James Toy, it was during the phone conversation, once she went to talk about it, wrote this up. All of that's not right. There's not one thing that's happened with this thing that's okay. And no, the end does not justify the means. It's one point five million out there, and I'm, I will not vote to ratify a signature when, when we are in a complete mess. You're not working with our lobbyist, you're working with some group that has proved to be completely unethical, that should not even be doing the lobbying that they're doing here. So for, for, I'll break for now. Commissioner Barrick.
All right. Commissioner Finnegan knew about this over a week more than I did. And I'll bet most of you did. I found out about this last Thursday afternoon, around four o'clock in the afternoon. And I couldn't get all the information she got, but I got some of it. Paperwork was started in February, signed in March. We had decided in December, no, as a board. To me, there are only two employees that I, everybody keeps saying, we only have two employees. The county administrator and the attorney. And those are the only two that I'm allowed to either go to or I'm allowed to do whatever. Give them a pay raise, give them a pay cut, whatever. When my employee does this, it is overstepping a hundred percent their job description. And because of that, that is why I'm very adamant and very passionate, and I make it louder because my husband wears two hearing aids, but I'm going to try and get a little softer. That I am requesting that, that we terminate Mr. Howard immediately for lack of confidence in him. In other words, I don't have the confidence anymore that he won't go behind our backs and do something. He is not an elected official. We are the five elected officials. And people keep saying that. You know, the, the, you know, there's a difference between an employee and an elected official. Now, I also think that Commissioner Base needs to be sanctioned for what she had done. Okay? And, and that's because she did stuff that she shouldn't have done, but she did anyhow. And I am not against 491 at all. It's my district. It really is. It's something we need in the county for the, all of It's something we need in the county for the, all of the citizens, to get to and from wherever. But to, to be doing this, not going to our state senator, going to a different one. And, and I don't think that the employee that signed this form that I actually did get, I don't think if he knew his name was on this, that he would be very upset because he was probably told by you to sign it. And it, and it surprised me that his name was on it.
I didn't tell him to sign that. That's not accurate.
Well, when I get a book like this, it's completely published. It doesn't take 10 minutes to publish this. And it outlines 100% what was decided by the board. Okay? I think that there has to be a definite consequence. And I'm sorry about that, but that's exactly how I feel.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
There's been an awful lot of good information, important, necessary information put out there. Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. There's been quite a bit of drama. Thank you. I, I strongly disagree with any notion that our county administrator should be terminated. Fine, after sitting up here for eight-plus years and being involved with a number of organizations and meetings and stuff, people struggle to find a good administrator, much less a great administrator. We have a great administrator. We don't have a saint. I believe there were a number of missteps here. I don't believe that any of them were for any personal financial gain. Commissioner Bayes said it perfectly, maybe got out ahead of her skis a little bit. And I believe that's, that's exactly what happened. I do not agree with putting a letter in his personnel chart. I, I, like you and, and others up here, have had, have hired and fired many employees over the years. And the policy that I have had in place for a very long time is that when something is done wrong, that we sit down and have a conversation about it. And that employee leaves that conversation knowing very, very well that not only was it wrong, but what is the proper way to do this in the future? Now, Mr. Howard has had nothing short, and by, by his own doing, has had nothing short of a public flogging here. I don't think that we would ever face this situation again. I don't think that, that we would face this with not just Commissioner Bayes, but any of the commissioners up here. And so I, I will leave it at that, that I think it's been adequately unpacked. I think the people that have been involved have, have heard loud and clear, we want a different process, or to follow the processes that we have in place. And I look forward to moving forward together.
Well, I appreciate those words, and you have it on my full authority that I will never utter a word.
Madam Chair, since I haven't weighed in yet, I'm going to be very brief.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard. Well done. Very well said. Not good how we got here, but lessons learned.
And I promise you, it was nothing more than well, well-intentioned of just something. And, and had I have known this was the process, I would have never done it. Didn't, it didn't accept, it didn't understand it. So again, my apologies.
I would also like to say, Mr. Howard, thank you for bringing up an idea of codifying the process, because anything that we can do to have paperwork, to understand how things are supposed to be done, is very beneficial. We are still below the staff levels that we had in 2008. And this is not an excuse at all, but it is an explanation that this county is running at, in piloting, we would call it VNE. Do not exceed speed because the plane will break up. We are running really hard. I watched the staff run really, really hard, and mistakes are going to happen in that environment. And I do think Mr. Howard has been an outstanding administrator. So consider yourself flogged.
Yeah, if I, if I could say one thing, I'd say, first of all, you know, these are all great comments. And as I mentioned before, if I was here the next 30 seconds as your county administrator, the next 30 years, these are all lessons learned. I'll never forget, I was in an event with somebody that said, "People that work hard make mistakes. People that work real hard make lots of mistakes. You don't want to repeat those, but these are lessons learned." So I say, I take full responsibility, apologize as well. Again, I think everybody was trying to do something amazing for this community, possibly. There's better ways of doing that, better ways of doing, you know, county business and those kind of things. I stand ready to do that, correct things, do what we got to do. I can assure you, this would never happen on my watch again. There'll be additional checks and balances. I'm already thinking about that in the last 48 hours with staff. I've talked about that. I want full packages. I want them signed off by the department heads. You'll see signatures. That's the way I do business. And again, much like all of you have said here today, my job is never to let you down. That's not what I want to do. I work around the clock for this community collectively as a team to move this county forward. That's my commitment to this community. And I don't tell stories, I don't lie. That's not what I do. You know, the reputation is, is important to me. It's, it's important to me to do that. But that's about, I leave you today.
Thank you. So the last thing I'm going to say, it looks like you get a pass today. So what I would tell you privately, I'm just going to tell you publicly, that I do believe that you're not going to lie, and you wouldn't. But I think that you've lost trust with a lot of our public. And I would never not say or praise all the good work that you've done. I really do. When Commissioner Kennard says you've done an amazing job, and then some, really. But I do notice, to not lie, you just don't answer. You don't answer questions, or I've seen you talk around it. So I'm asking you publicly, you've lost some trust with me. We're going to have to work on that. But anybody that's ever worked for me, even staff, when I was first elected around that table the first time, we kind of laughed about it. But everybody knows who I am that has worked in any capacity with me. If you make a mistake, come and tell me. I will help you. No one will fight harder to get us to the other side. But lie to me, and you have lost something forever. I want to be different, maybe? That's, that's who I am. So I'm sure the public is like that too. They, they have some reservations at this point. And I think this entire board. I think we are going to have to prove something to the public now. Doing great work is, is great. I mean, that's been said, we're just trying to do something good. Doing something good is never a secret. And I'm going to leave it at that.
We do have a motion here under this agenda item, so.
The motion was?
To ratify the signature, but.
Oh, who, who made that motion?
Nobody.
It's on the, no, I'm saying there is one. I'll make a motion to deny that item, to ratify the signature. We, we can't go further into the hole.
I second it.
Hang, hang on just a second. We have an agenda item. Was there a motion to approve it? And who seconded?
No.
Okay, so we didn't have a motion. All right. So now we have a motion to deny it.
Right.
And we have, we have a second. Okay.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan to deny the ratifying of the signature, and it's seconded by Commissioner Barrick. Now I'll open it to the public. And the comments are to be addressed to the chair, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Renee Bedford from Flora City. Don't make this short and sweet. You're all pointing at one person. We elected you as a board, as a whole. You want to just fire one. You all need to be held accountable for this. And this is just, "Oops, I'm sorry, I made a mistake." No, it's not just one mistake. I know public records show that there's been previous incidences, and this has just brought it all into light. And I would like to request an investigation on all of it. You're saying, "I don't know this, I don't know that. You don't know this, I don't know that signature, this date." I, the public, would like to know the answers to all of those questions that you don't know, you don't know, and you don't know. Is that possible?
You can ask for a public records request for whatever it is that you desire. Yes, ma'am.
And I would like that investigation done publicly.
But you have to put it in writing.
And I will do so.
Okay.
I did that, that's what I said. So everything that I have, I've, I've shared with you.
I haven't got any answers back from mine either.
I, I mean, it's whatever's in the public record. That, I guess that's the point. A lot of conversations were done by, I only did public record on emails. So phone, conversations, texts. It was late and I didn't because frankly, I wouldn't get anything.
All I hear is excuse, excuse, excuse. I mean, the fact is, you let the community down. You're supposed to lead us. You failed, all of you. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. You can give it to her afterwards.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't even know you'd be there.
Andrea McCray, Inverness, Florida. You all know, I know you all personally, and you know I don't speak publicly. But I'm going to say that I'm very disappointed with how this happened. Commissioner Kennard, Commissioner Bayes, when this first came out publicly on the blog, you all had all day to say mea culpa. There is no perfection, we're all human, we all make mistakes. But the day went on, and what there was, was a doubling down. My expectation, not that you all owe me anything, but the public, there should have been a mea culpa. You know, we messed up, this is how we moved forward, this is how we corrected it. But that's not what happened. So I'm not here to say you don't owe me anything. But I, I will say that you have let the public down. Commissioner Kennard, you just, you just failed to be thorough. Commissioner Finnegan, thank you for being thorough. I didn't pull a public records request, I just watched. As you all know, I usually put a pair of eyeballs, I just watch. To hide the issues and just to, to cover up over, over everything. The people are very upset. Citrus County is my heart. God knows I love this county and I love these people. The people are hurt, the people are disappointed. So when you just rush over it and say, "Oh, well, just forgive me," that's not addressing the hurt and the disappointment and the dishonesty that the people feel. So we're very disappointed, okay? The second thing I want to address, that you all are looking over, you hung a former, excuse me, an employee out for six weeks on administrative leave pending an investigation. You sat and went through the record request. You mentioned Steve Howard, the Mike Bridges, and the James Toy. Where is the administrative leave pending a formal investigation? So for something more egregious that's happened, that you just unfolded here, where is the administrative leave for these three gentlemen that you hung out? Let me call it out. Avast Cole, are you in the room? No, he's gone.
Ma'am, yeah, Avast is here.
Whatever. You, you, you put him, and nobody ever said publicly what he did. And not that it should be released. But for, for this business to be in the blog and go on for a week and everybody's upset, these three men are sitting here with, with no administration. Is it a race issue? I'm just asking the question. So why are these three men sitting here with no pending adminis, no administrative leave while this has unfolded, a public nightmare? But, but Avast is given six weeks administrative leave. And I'm not saying it's business, I don't even know that it wasn't, it wasn't a disgust. But these three men are called out with the public records request for something more egregious, but nobody's put on administrative leave. Y'all need to fix it. That's all I'm saying. It's not fair.
Can I answer here? Sure. Andrea?
Yes.
So the other two, sorry, I just, I just saw the other two names yesterday. But this board can't put employees, the only person, the only two people we could put on administrative leave are sitting right there.
Okay, well, put that one on it, because it's not fair.
Well, I was going to put something in the file, but this board did not want to do that.
Oh. Well, it doesn't look fair. He's doing something more egregious. So I'm, what's the difference? And then the other two? Go ahead.
Can we, it's open to the public. She wanted to answer you, but it's not a debate.
Thank you, honey.
Thank you.
All right, Curtis Bryant-Lacanto. First, I'm going to address the motion on the floor. I am a procedure person, and generally up here, we're talking about the motions on the floor for those comments. So I think that we need to approve that motion to deny this request. I reached out to our senator's office, and he is not thrilled with this, as you guys know. He does not want to see this go to Tallahassee as a formal request. So I will go with that. Now, to add to kind of what everyone else has said in the past, we have six core values here in Citrus County that you guys decided on, on your website. Those are transparency, respect, stewardship, integrity, accountability, and innovation. I will argue this addressed one of those issues, and that's stewardship. Everyone can agree here that we need 491 money. This is getting 491 money, good stewardship. However, three of those other ones have issues. Transparency. There's been four, it's four meetings since this has first come to the public, or has first signed behind the scenes of the public records request. This was never mentioned once as one of those projects. Two of these meetings happened since it was signed on that March date. It's only here today because it got caught. Respect. Do our senators respect us in Tallahassee? I know our current senator is not happy with us for that. Local citizens, is there local citizens respecting us here, what we're doing here in Citrus County now? We need to keep things in the public and follow standard procedure. I went back and looked. I've never seen a appropriations request sent from this county to the state of Tallahassee, or Tallahassee without the board approval to do that. This is the first time I've seen that happen. So we need to be respectful for that. Integrity. Signing a form under penalty of perjury with a false statement on that form is a huge issue. That's potential legal issues, I won't get into any of those things. Going around our state senators, going around them to submit to somebody else, and going against the wishes of the VOCC. We, you, you guys told them in, in January that we were going to pull this project from the funding requests. And here we are today, talking about the funding request that was sent to Tallahassee. Now is your chance for accountability. Now, with that accountability, that's up to you guys to decide what accountability needs to be. I heard you guys say, you know, kind of what your thoughts are on that. But there needs to be something, there needs to be something done here to restore the trust for Citrus County citizens, restore the trust for our senators and representatives in Tallahassee. So I want you guys to think along the heart about what that needs to be, and then do something to do all that. And I do want to remind you that not too long ago, I believe it was several months ago, we had a state, or staffer spend $50,000 from county money for a project that they thought needed to be done. And the VOCC said not to do that. That tourism director was fired as a result of that decision. So I will leave you with that. And again, accountability here. You guys have a chance to address that issue in, in what you guys feel is best for that. Thank you.
Deb Spence, Crystal River. Commissioner Finnegan, I disagree with you that this is a functioning board. It was considered in the beginning that this would be a better board. It is not. There are snakes on this board, and they are heading out to get people. They did this against our lawyer not long ago, blindsiding people on the board, asking for resignations. It was inappropriate then, and to sit here and to, to grin someone without the ability to defend themselves. Commissioner Finnegan, you went on for a good long time. And yet, Mr. Howard had very little time to kind of rebut anything. Six months ago, about, this county went through a horrific double hurricane. Mr. Howard made sure that we were prepared for that hurricane. The contracts were in place, everything was ready to go. So the day after the hurricane, everything was put in place. Other counties didn't have that. You want to go up to Inglis and find out that they're still asking Citrus County for some help for hurricane? Mr. Howard made sure at that time that everything was done appropriately to make sure that we got reimbursement for FEMA funds. Not every county did that. He has done his job, and he's done it well. And this whole thing has played out in public comments. And unfortunately, the public right now is, "We love you, we hate you. We want to hire you, we want to fire you. You're an idiot, you're a putz, whatever it is. You're an idiot, you're a putz," whatever it is. We can't figure out from one day to the next who people are here, and who we like and who we don't like. We're people, we're not perfect people, you're not perfect people, God love you, you're not. Mr. Howard is not, our legal beagle is not. These are personal issues here. I've heard from both sides here, and, and I think that this, this concept of we've got to get them is on the national level, it's on the state level. If I could just say one thing, when we talk about the money that Citrus County gets from the state, it is abysmal. If you think you've got friends in Tallahassee, you do not, because other counties are getting a lot of money. The state doesn't have money? I heard the governor say that he's got a surplus of money. Why doesn't it come to Citrus County? We could certainly use it. We can send people, we can pick people up in Arizona and fly them up to Martha's Vineyard at the cost of $2 million, but we can't help repave a road in Citrus County? Come on, we're not working together. You all have your own little private fiefdoms that you think you, you're responsible for. But you need to get together, you all need to get your acts together and work together for this county. Mr. Howard does not deserve to be hot fired for this. He was not acting alone, he has given his explanation, and I got to say, as y'all know, I'm the Democrat in the room, and I find it really hard to come up here and try to defend a bunch of Republicans. But nobody else is doing it. So, please, get together and stop being snakes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't know exactly what all is pertaining, I haven't been to a meeting in a long time due to...
Could you state your name and your address for the record?
I'm sorry, Tracy Duncan of La Canto.
Thank you.
I apologize. I do, am thankful for this being brought out to the public, so we are aware. I don't think there's any fault in bringing this information out to the public, we have a right to know. How it's handled, I do think it should be handled properly, and it should be fairly. I heard mention of other people's names being mentioned, and one gentleman being penalized and others not, that doesn't appear to be too fair. So, whoever had a hand in it, there should be some type of, you know, disciplinary or something to that effect, so that it know it was wrong. No commissioner board is ever going to be perfect. I am very upset by the board's things here lately. I came today because I had some things I wanted to say, and I haven't had a chance to say it, and I really need to get going, I'm actually behind my appointments that I was supposed to be to, but the taxpayers have a right to know. We honestly do, and there's a lot going on in this county that we're not being made aware of at a time for us to be able to come and speak. Over a year ago, I asked for y'all to consider, please, consider having evening meetings, so those of us that work during the day can come and say our piece. Most of this county, you're seven to three, nine to four, or, excuse me, nine to five, eight to four. We cannot afford to take off to come to a 1 o'clock meeting. I've been sitting here since it began, and this is the first time I've been able to say anything, and I'm actually have missed out on something I needed to be doing, but we the taxpayers, we care about this county. I have lived here now for over 30 years. I love this county, and I hate seeing what's going on. I don't want unfairness going on, but we have a right as taxpayers to know what's going on, and plenty of time for us to have a say to do something about it. So, I thank the two people that had the guts to bring this out to the public, I thank you. It's not a pleasant thing, but sometimes things are not pleasant, but it still needs to be known, and we need to deal with it the best way that is honestly to deal with it. Not to hide it, not to shun it off, but let's deal with it, let's move forward, but let's deal with it properly and fairly. And I do thank those who really care about our county and the taxpayers that are here. So, that's all I'm going to say at this time.
Thank you.
Teri Webber in Ellis IV4. I have to say, this is one of the most interesting meetings I've attended in, what, four years? If there's any doubt now in anybody's mind that there were behind the scenes dealings concerning IV4, this should clear it up. It's not surprising to me that Cannard and Davis are sticking together, and I did want to, the board doesn't know this conversation I had with Mr. Howard, and I wanted to share it with you. If you remember, Commissioner Bays, you very strongly at a VOCC meeting instructed the attorney as well as Mr. Howard to contact the FDLE to find out the status of their investigation. Well, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Howard about something totally unrelated, but then I asked him if he followed your instructions, and he said no, and they, and that he had no intentions to do so. He said he would have a talk with you, and that was pretty much it, there were other things we were talking about. So, who exactly is running this county? Is Mr. Howard calling the shots, and maybe Denise Lynn, maybe Walt Eastman, maybe these other people that you mentioned today? Who's running our county? It's, I just, this whole thing just kind of blows my mind with a little slap on the hand from Mr. Howard. I don't consider him a great administrator. What I consider him is a lot of fluff. I'm tired of the little quotes at the end of the day, and I'm tired of hearing about the pizza parties for staff, and this, that, and the other thing, and now he's going to try to tell us that he didn't know what he was signing? Come on, come on. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next, please.
Commissioner Chairperson Bays, I came here with some prepared remarks, but...
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'd be happy to. My name is Dean Godfrey. I live in Butler, Pennsylvania, and Inverness, Florida. Both places. I wrote you all two letters over the last few months, and hello, commissioners, and Steve, hello, good to see you again. And I've been coming to Citrus County for, since 1983. My professional background, I'm a commercial real estate developer, and basically an entrepreneur for the last 50 years. I still have businesses, I am never going to retire until they do me in. This may be the only happy thing I've heard all day, and that is, I came here to tell you I want to buy the Coca-Cola building. Now, I know you've made some plans for the Coca-Cola building, or started some plans, but I want to buy it, I've wanted to buy it for years. It's the finest Coca-Cola building that I've found anywhere in the country, and I want to put a fine art gallery there, and an art cultural center.
Madam Chair, is this on this agenda item?
I'm sorry?
Well, is this to remain to what we're talking about on this agenda item? Are, are you want to...
I'm, I'm sorry.
You'll have another, you'll have another chance at the apple.
Am I done?
You're done, for the moment.
So, when do I get...
You're, you're looking at general open to the public, and you can come back up and talk about that.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're...
I thought you were going to get around to something else.
I'm so sorry.
I was waiting. Welcome, welcome home.
Sure, no, 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 no. Gwen Martin, Altoona, Iowa. I did suspend my winters in Inverness Village, or Inverness. However, it only took me three years, maybe four years, to know what the corruption was in this county. And as far as backroom deals, there's 400 and some odd residents in IV4 that are going through crevices and going, they can't get in their drives because of backdoor deals in this county. I talked, I had a meeting with Davis and with Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard was supposed to get back with me on something. Mr. Howard doesn't even know who I am now. And it's, it's time the public knows that backdoor deals, I'm not saying everybody sitting up there had backdoor deals, because some of you weren't up here, but there was a lot of backdoor deals, and that's why you have 490 patrons out there that you don't care about. And that's why I left IV4, I left Citrus County, so none of my tax dollars comes here again because of the corruption. Thank you.
Hello. Nicholas Holmes, Crystal River. Most of you know me, a few of you don't. Biggest problem you have is optics. It's not necessarily that you did anything wrong, and I know you personally, Mrs. Bays, I know you are trying to do the best for the county, but you were almost disingenuous and scoffed at your apology today. It rubbed me wrong, as I'm sure it rubbed a couple other people wrong. And honestly, my biggest concern is actually with Mr. Howard. I don't know what's going on. Do we really have the county administrator not sure of what he's signing, just sending out things that are, not knowing where it's going, and noticing it's on the wrong one, still send it out? It's an optics thing. Yeah, I know you guys are all trying to do your best, but if it's something that happens that's wrong, make it, move on.
I appreciate your comments, and once again, all I can tell you is I, it's not, I'm not trying to disown this, I'm very much owning it. I messed up, but I didn't do it out of any malicious intent, not getting anything out of it. I, it was presented to me one way, and I got caught up on the sidelines, and it's my job as the chair to take the full responsibility for staff. I don't, it, whatever, I can't even tell you. I wish I could go back and, Commissioner Finnegan, and I wish I could say, I, I wish I could go to the timeline and say, "Here's what was." I can't do that because it was really that insignificant. It was a phone call, "Hey, here it is," it was my understanding, a scope of work. I, the first I ever saw the paperwork is from the public records request, so that's kind of where we're at. All I can do is apologize, I can't say anymore. I think, you know, I've been in this county since, or been, was a county commissioner in 2010, and I will tell you, Mr. Howard, does, you know, does he have a couple pimples and, you know, frogs and all that other stuff? He does, I mean, we all do. There's not one person that doesn't. But I can tell you, driving across the state that was impacted by those storms, and I think the, Teri said it in the back, man, oh, man. I mean, we, we come out of that, IV4, I hear you loud and clear. I, I wish I could fix it, but it was a failed subdivision that went bad. People bought on dirt roads. I want, I, I want to be able to fix it. We can't, as a county, financially fix it and, and take care of other business. I, I want every road in this county paved, I want every residential road resurfaced, I want it all. I want everything that you want. And if I'm guilty of one thing, I am guilty of trying to advance the cause. Wasn't meant to be behind closed doors, didn't even think we were ever going to get anything. It's that messed up in Tallahassee, that I know they're looking Doge, we're looking at every piece of every inch, where we're going to cut, what we're going to cut, how we're going to cut it. Do I want to cut our budget? I do want to cut our budget. I don't know how to cut our budget and get us where we need to go. I mean, we got constitutional officers wanting space needs relief, we got people wanting their roads repaved, we got people wanting road capacity, we want parks, we want ball fields, I mean, we all want it all. I want to give you, I want it to be Christmas, and I want to give you everything that you want. I just don't know how to do it. Floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, Inverness Village 4. I sat here, I listened to everyone here, Commissioner Bays. I do want to thank Commissioner Finnegan for doing a fabulous job in kind of presenting the timeline and what was going on. I really don't know the administrator, Steve Howard, when Commissioner Finnegan said, in response to him saying that he doesn't lie, and the fact that he just doesn't respond, that's exactly how I feel. You know, there's been questions posed to him, and he'll say, "He doesn't know, he'll get back to us," or whatever, never hear a response from him. I have a brother who I love dearly, and we, we kind of tease him and say, "You lie a lot." He says, "I don't lie, I'm a good storyteller." And I, that's how I see the administrator, a good storyteller. I think what he, what he has done in the past during the hurricane, that's all commendable. But unfortunately, the fact is that he messed up, and he has to be held accountable. What that accountability is, that's really up to you all, he's your employee, just like Ms. Lynn is your employee, so you have to handle that. I agree with what other people said in terms of IV4, I think that there was a lot of things that were being done in the past. I'm not holding anyone on this board accountable, but it did occur, and I think an investigation needs to be done. I think any employee or staff needs to be, the departments at least, investigated and audited, to find out what's going on, because there's a lot of mistrust. And unfortunately, that's going to take a lot of time for this board to build that trust back up. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Yes. If I may, Mr. Howard, you have definitely taken a beating today, and I may have helped that along, but, and, and maybe well deserved, but I will say one thing, maybe this will help you, maybe not, just one thing I left out with all the facts, since you seem to be getting the, the brunt of it all. I think Commissioner Bays and Mr. Howard both alluded to what the lobbyists have said and how they presented themselves, and in, in that look, it clicked in, you said one other thing to me on the phone, when I called, when I couldn't communicate by email. You said you were upset too, and you didn't know what was going on, and you called Mike Moore, and I didn't know who that was, and it was with the Southern Group. And I looked at the state of Florida, you can look up the lobbyists, because I'm like, okay, there's a David Browning, Steve's talking about a Mike Moore, there's only two lobbyists from that group that's in any public records, that's Ruthie Schleba and Laura Beamer. Interestingly enough, when I looked up the lobbying group for Metro Development and saw the Southern Group lobbying for them, Ruthie Schleba and Laura Beamer's name are not registered to lobby for Metro Group, the David Browning is, I'm assuming that's why his name's on the forum, but the man that you said, that you thought, you know, something wasn't right, I remembered that when I saw beside his name on the list of lobbyists, withdrawn. So, he's withdrawn from that group. So, I, I don't know if that helps, I don't know, your case, I mean, there's obviously some problems that we've addressed, but I, I think this firm did come into Citrus County and just spin a whole number. I don't think people withdraw from what they're doing when all this is going on if they did not have responsibility for this. So, I felt like putting everything out there, I probably needed to say that, because some of those things that you were telling me checked out.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Want to clarify something about what Teri Webber Ellis said about, Mr. Howard said he would call FDLE. I reported two weeks ago, at our meeting two weeks ago, that not only had Mr. Howard called the FDLE investigator, but so had I, and it was getting very close to the end, like, I did, I said it publicly unless I was...
No, no, no.
No, he did.
I did, well, if I can, it's okay if I'm out, I don't want to be out of line, but actually, after our conversation, the conversation we had, I didn't have a contact for FDLE, because I've never been involved with, I think the county attorney was and others were, I had no involvement, so I wouldn't have a phone number. I reached out to Chair Bays and said, "Hey, someone had brought this, have you talked to him?" She gave me the phone number, and actually, I, I called him, then, I didn't report that back to you, because what he told me was an ongoing investigation, and that's what I got. So, I in fact did follow up and did do that, what I said.
Yeah, Mr. Howard's report to me was the same experience I had the first time I talked to him, end of last year, and it was the same experience I had with him two weeks ago, only he does believe he's actually closing in on this, but we need to talk about this situation. We also, one other point on... We also, one other point on auditing our books. We just won the triple crown of audits for the umpteenth year in a row. The county itself has gotten the, what's the official award for like 20 years running?
GFOA, the presentation budget award.
We are audited out the yin yang, so feel free to prove the CPA firms wrong and find it. Back to the matter at hand, unless someone else wants to talk about it open to the public, but I have a more board discussion on the actual voting matter.
Are we allowed to discuss what they said now?
I was, I was yielding the floor if someone wanted to discuss what was done.
I have to ask Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at her. She's in charge.
I'm confused. Why are you asking me?
Take over.
Commissioner Barrick, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I wanted to answer a couple of the people that had spoken up here. Am I allowed to do that at this point?
Sure.
Okay, because I, I didn't know we could do that, this one.
Well, I mean, we're on, we're still on N1.
No, we're not. We're answering what they said.
Right.
When Andrea came up, she talked about the blog. A lot of people know me, they know I don't do internet very much. So when people say they saw this on a blog or saw that on a blog, unless you give me written stuff to read, or I go to a meeting and attend it, I won't be referencing a blog, because that's, that's not me. I will read the newspaper, and then I'll ask questions, because, did it make sense? And then I'm getting questions from people, well, this was in the paper. And I can't even answer them, because it's never been brought to me by anybody through the county channels. So it frustrates me on that. The other thing is, someone said that our administrator did a wonderful job when we had the hurricanes. I have to agree, he has done a wonderful job with the hurricanes, which means he knows what to do. Which means when these papers were filled out, he knew what he was doing. That's where the problem is. He is the administrator. He is not the elected official, and I'm gonna stick by that every day of the week. The only two people I can do anything to are the attorney and the administrator. I would love to see the other people get put on administrative leave while we check out what Mr. Toy did, or what somebody else did that were brought up earlier. But I can't do that. Only the administrator can do that. But I also am very, very disappointed that the rest of the board doesn't realize, giving him this authority is like saying, well, you got elected by us. I didn't elect him to anything. He is an employee. And I will remember that as long as I can, and it's gonna take him a long time to get my trust back for anything.
Is there anybody else wishing to say anything?
Before you call the vote?
Yes.
I want to say on, I failed to say this earlier, that I had, I first learned of this last Tuesday when the story broke publicly. I had nothing to do with it at all. And secondly, before you call the vote, I would like to, it would, it sticks in my throat to approve after the fact on something that was this mismanaged. That being said, I want to look out for the good of the county. I would like to hear the opinion of the eight-plus-year commissioner on the end and the six-plus-year commissioner in the middle about the effects on Tallahassee and certainly our relationship with Senator Angolia.
All I can tell you is I've reached out to Senator Angolia. I made my apology. I asked him to reach out, contact me. I needed his advice, wanted to discuss this with him. I have heard nothing. I did the same with J.J. Groh, and I've heard nothing back. That's all I can tell you.
So, because I hate to turn down money for a project that we need, so, but I don't like how this went down.
The very first order of business needs to be to turn this down. We have a great senator in Senator Angolia. I have said that long before we ever got involved in this mess, as well as our representative, Representative Groh, who's been a longtime, very good friend of mine. There are, there are good things happening up there. There are great things happening here in the county. Certainly, there's some relationship rebuilding that needs to happen, but it starts with turning this down, bring it back next year, go through the proper process, request some money, start, you know, and it takes going up there, meeting them on their turf, having these conversations, this is what the board decided, I'm here to advocate for it, and working together as a team as we were not just two weeks ago.
As I've always, thank you for that.
So, yes, first order of business is to turn this down and.
We have a.
And I'm, and I'm, I just want to say one last thing. I'm relieved by that, thank you. And I will say again that this job is a vertical learning curve.
Fair enough. All right, we have a motion on the floor to deny the appropriations request, second by, or motion by, made by Finnegan, second by Janet Barrick. All those in favor to deny this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, we're finally on to the.
Oh, my God, we haven't done any business yet.
The consent agenda. I thought we had consent, yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Barrick. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now, on to open to the public. Is there anybody wishing to address open to the public? Mr. Coke Building, please come forward. That's okay. I called you Mr. Coke Building. Coke Building.
Hello? My name is Dean Godfrey. I'm from Butler, Pennsylvania, and Inverness. I'm a businessperson. I guess best could be called an entrepreneur of 50 years. I'm kind of easing down on my business activities a bit. I love fine art. I have a small fine art collection. I have always loved that building since I've been coming here in 1983. And I want to buy it. And I want to turn it into an art, a fine art gallery, and a cultural center. And because I haven't had a lot of feedback of, other than, I did meet with, with Mr. Howard, and he basically said, that's handled and done. But I don't give up easily. So I just can't imagine making that a government building in my wildest dreams, where we have a beautiful little town here. I think it's there. And you did a beautiful job on the bike paths and the railroad tracks and all that stuff down that way, and all the parking. I just think a spot like that would be fabulous for Inverness, especially at the rate Inverness is growing. You know, what's happened here in the last 10 years is out of this world, I must tell you, and I give you credit for whoever may have been responsible for that. I did some study, I went on Grok, ex-AI Grok, and did some studies and found out, what's the difference between government, employment, and a private business? Well, there's a lot of difference. One thing, government employees come to work and they go home. A business creates other activities in the community, like big time. The building hasn't been on the tax roll since, I assume, 1983. It would be on the tax roll. Hopefully, we would make some money. And combine this effort to jointly bring this town kind of together with the weekend and weak activity, because there are a lot of people show up out here, a lot of people. And so I, I got a call from my cleaning lady the other day, and she said, well, how's that Coke Building thing doing? Because I told her about it. And I said, well, I'm still trying. And she said, well, let me tell you what my kid came home with the other day. Her name's Kelly, by the way. I can't pronounce her last name, but it doesn't matter. And she says, my kids came home with an agenda for a class outing. And she's, and she.
You have three minutes, I'm sorry.
That's it?
That's it. I'm sorry.
This is probably the most important part.
Hang around, we all, you can pick up at the very end to the next open to the public, but don't start over. Stop where you left off.
He's, he's already had four and a half minutes.
Thank you. It's open for the public. I don't usually get to be able to come up here as many times as I have. But there is an anger that's going on, and it's not just in Citrus County, it's across the country. Everybody's mad, everybody's a crook. Every one of you is stealing money from this county. Where's this coming from? You know, we were at one point a nice county. We supported each other with a hurricane help group that we had out there. We came together in an amazing way, and now you're all bums. I don't get it. Commissioner Bays, you talked about families and youth and getting it together. Until we stopped bullying in this county, and that's what it is. You look at the blogs, you look at the social media posts, there's name-calling, there's accusations, there's, you're an idiot, you're a moron, and everything else. When did this happen, and why do you allow some of this to exist? Why is it never addressed at a countywide meeting? Is this mental health? Because we know we have a mental health crisis going on. Is it because of the stress of homelessness and everything? I don't know, but I think people are just angry and yelling at each other because they're told to, because they don't understand what it takes to sit up there and to do what you do every day. You have your private lives, you're people. You're imperfect people, but you care. You love this county, you love the people of this county, and I have to say that they don't love you back. I don't have a great distrust for this group. I have a somewhat distrust for the state and for the federal government, but I think you personally care. And somehow or other, that has to get out and stop this anger of everybody being against you and that you don't know what you're doing and you're no good. And it's gonna start with the five of you getting together and acting as one group. And I know that there's five voices, but it's important when you talk about what the future is for this county, because it's only getting worse and worse and worse. And there are certain agitators that are out there in the community, and they caught hold of this one, and they went wild with it. And then everybody else just kind of gets on the bandwagon and rolls along with it. So please, be aware that, that not everybody hates you, and not everybody thinks that you all need to be voted out. I think that when I heard of the last election, we need to vote out, vote out, and I kept asking, what do you want to vote for? We don't know. We just want the bums out. And that's where we are, that people can't identify what it is they want or what we need. So please be aware that there are people out there that are supportive and aren't ready to throw all the bums out, maybe just a couple.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for open to the public? Seeing none, we're gonna close open to the public and go to regular business.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we accept E1A through E1J.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrick, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E2?
Second.
That's a preliminary budget hearing, proposed date?
Choose one of the dates.
Oh, never mind, I wasn't looking at the backup.
I think it was you two that had, somebody had an issue.
I don't anymore, but she does.
I don't have one anymore either.
So is there a motion required? We can just keep the ones that we already approved?
Or you keep it at July 23rd, if you don't want to move it.
Then there's no motion, we can just.
I think so, it just says.
July 23rd, is everybody good with that?
July 23rd?
It was either July 30 or July 31st.
Or the 23rd.
Or the 23rd, I can do the 23rd.
Super double check that, since it's been moved a million times.
I checked out the 30th and the 31st, and I was fine with those.
Or, or we can have the 23rd.
Yeah, 23rd.
I guess so.
We're looking at keeping it July 23rd? Is that what it's currently at?
Yes. Everybody okay with July 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. You have your consensus.
All right, thank you.
E3.
Motion to approve E3?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E4?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E5?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barrick and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E6?
Second.
I have a commotion, commotion. A motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E7?
Second.
A, B, C, sorry.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E8, A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to deny E9, and I'll explain my position after a second.
I have a motion to deny by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barrick.
So the reason I chose to do this is just some part of what we were talking about this morning about the budget. It's, I feel like this is what's happening now. This is how we make our budget bigger when it comes budget time. It comes before us, it doesn't seem so bad, and then we start giving departments more employees. Then when we have to discuss the budget, now we have to fund this. I think that the new director is doing a fantastic job. This isn't anything, you know, to say what Louis is doing, but department heads are going to have to start figuring out some of these things in their budgets. I, I think the backup was like, they're doing things a different way. Well, retrain some employees, reutilize the employees, figure it out within your budget. And if that can't be done when it's budget time and everybody's making their ask, that is the appropriate time to do it. Now is not the appropriate time, because I think if we start doing this, all departments are going to decide, well, if we start throwing in employees that we absolutely need during the year, the budget's just gonna be inflated by the time we have to sit and make decisions. So I say, put a pin in this, figure it out for now, and then let's talk about it again at budget time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis?
I think Commissioner Finnegan makes an outstanding point on this. However, in the area of IT, it's too critical for me. I, I feel like if they need it now, they need it now, and it's something that I would support in the following budget year, because if we get hit with a cyber attack, we are, it's enormously expensive and disruptive.
I'm not saying, I'm sorry.
That's fine, go ahead.
I'm not saying for him not to implement this, or even. I'm not saying for him not to implement this or even hire, but rework it in your own budget. Just like you have to in your business. If you need somebody and there's no more money, you're going to figure it out. You're going to decide what's most important and you have to figure it out. That's what our citizens are doing in their incomes. If it's important, they restructure and figure it out until they can get more money.
And if I may, that's why I made a very strong public statement to put all the other directors on notice that I wouldn't, I would stop any of the other departments. But IT is just too critical and they're too understaffed, in my opinion, for cybersecurity reasons. But go ahead, I mean, do the vote. I mean, that's why I'm not, that's why I'm not going to support it.
Louis wants to come, I think these were also recommended by the clerk's office too, I think. But make sure that I'm factual on that. But I know part of their, their review and things suggested some additional positions.
Is that in our backup?
I'm just doing them from memory right now. I just, when I was thinking about, you were talking about critical and things like that. I don't know if these are the same ones or not, because they may not be. I just remember during the, are these related to the auditor's suggestions too? Are these different, they may be different?
No, these are two positions that are more critical than that at this moment.
Okay, so I just remembered from memory some, some of that from memory.
There is, there is a position that the auditors actually expressed that we really need to have.
Okay.
But I pushed that back to October.
Okay.
Because these other two positions, without going into details because of things that I just don't want to bring up here right now. These positions are highly critical right now and we definitely need those.
Okay, there's some difference, I wasn't sure.
May I ask a question? Louis, hi.
Hello.
You're saying the positions are critical, but actually the work that you have to do is critical. And your current staff cannot perform the work that is critical?
So without, I mean, this is not a good conversation to have because-
Understood, so-
Very specific things, but-
Don't be specific then.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard not to be for this conversation.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Would it be harmful if we tabled this until the next county commission meeting when each of us can meet with you individually? And you can explain?
Yes, we could definitely do that.
I assume there's a security issue is the reason that you don't want to talk about this publicly. But it's not harmful if we table it and then bring it back. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to the motion that's on the floor. I like hearing, you know, the directors come up and explain why they're adding, you know, $200,000 to this coming budget. But it sounds like maybe each one of us need to have that conversation with them.
And I did hear it in my briefing and it, I, I would agree with what he's told me in my briefing, but I don't want to discuss that here.
Likewise.
So may I withdraw my motion? And then, do I need to make a motion for us to table this to the next board meeting?
I need to withdraw the second, which I will do.
And will you second the new motion to table this to the next board meeting?
I'll second a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Do we even need to do that, just bring it back? Okay. They've made a motion and a second.
Okay, all right, so. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baric to bring this back to the next agenda. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve-
Just a quick clarification. It, it was a motion to table. That's what I was asking, thank you.
Motion to approve E ten, A and B?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E eleven?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Baric and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E twelve, A and B?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to approve E thirteen, A, B and C?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Is there any update on outstanding commission items?
Madam Chair, I can't believe it, but we may actually end in time for our five.
Oh, hush, don't jinx us.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'll try to make this brief since it's been a long day, but I do have a few updates. One is in relation to the workshop this morning, the landfill expansion. We are currently at ninety-five percent complete, but due to a few punch list items still outstanding, we have extended that deadline to July of 2025. So it is substantially complete, but we are waiting for electrical panels to be put through retesting and waiting for road repaving. For core civic staffing, for the month of March, we were at seventy-nine point nine eight percent, which is an uptick from the previous month, which was sixty-five point ninety-nine. Mr. Whitick was very excited to announce that, so I wanted to make sure I highlighted that improvement. TBRPC did present the vulnerability assessment today. We do consider that to be an achieved project, but I know that there was discussion of bringing FDEP back or the results from the FDEP input. Would that be something that you'd like me to keep on the list or-
I would like it to be kept on the list because I think it's highly important.
Okay, so once we get that FDEP feedback and, and Amy returns, then I will remove it from the list at that time. For road resurfacing for twenty-three, twenty-four, we currently have District Two and District Three completed. Paving is in progress in Districts One and Five. We have forty-one of one hundred and two roads complete. And based on those two different percentages, remember, achieve, it might show something a little different because of the way that it breaks out. But if you just go for percentage of roads complete regardless of district, we're at forty percent for last year's budget. And then this year, FY twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, we are currently on track with District Two fully completed. Paving in progress in the remaining four districts. Fifty-two out of one hundred and thirty-two roads complete. So both programs, this current year is thirty-nine percent complete, the previous year's forty. So we are making good progress on both. And finally, the impact fee study is currently on track. We did receive the preliminary impact fee study document. And the first public workshop for that study will be scheduled for May thirteenth. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you very much. Mr. Howard?
Yes, this is just a resolution expressing support for ensuring government efficiency and authorizing collaboration with the Government Efficiency Team from the Governor's Office. Actually, they were reaching out again to me today. And so we're getting a lot of dialogue now and just want this to be official, that I'm the point of contact to give them information if they need it, it's deemed appropriate.
Thank you. So motion to approve G one? I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we have, we received information from our congressman and they're requesting if the board will consider, there's a list of items of recommended action. But with communication from that office, they're recommending the Home Sasa wastewater lift station to be approved. They can expedite that, so we're asking approval for that.
Motion to approve G two?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public input? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we just make sure we specify the Home Sasa wastewater lift station?
Yes. Do you have that clerk? Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
To add that to the list?
Well, that's what we are voting on, just the Home Sasa.
It's the last one on, on the list and that's the one that's just- None of the rest of them are included, only that one.
No, just that one.
Thank you.
It's been fully vetted, thank you.
All right, looks we don't have any advisory board nominations or appointments. Commissioner Davis?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Kennard?
Just one thing that I hadn't put it on the agenda. And it came out of one of our time certainties today. It sounds to me like it would be appropriate to get a workshop on the calendar regarding the homeless issue, potential shelters, or just have that discussion. And it sounds, it sounds like a workshop would be in order rather than us just throwing an agenda item on here and then it getting messy.
Okay. Anything else, the homeless?
No.
Madam Chair, I think that's a great idea. Just to keep you fully informed, as you know, we did the bus trip on March twenty-eighth. That happened to be spring break week, which means the only person on the bus from CCSD was Joe Farady on the school board, as well as Dawn Farady for J.J. Groves' office. The school district would like to do a tour, they're going to do that in June.
Great.
And that way we can get all of our, all the community partners having visited the shelters. In this particular case, it will also include Pasco. And we need to arrange this with the Pasco Commission because they, they want to know if we're coming down there. And look at the family shelters that they have there, which are used for a lot of the hurricane. And one of the points I didn't make earlier is that our tourism companies are suffering because our hotels are full of people that lost their homes. And having an appropriate family shelter instead of in the hotels would also help the economy and help our businesses stay afloat.
So maybe we look at a date in July?
Yes, I think so. And that'll also give us a chance to look at lands, meaning us, meaning CF, CCSD, Catholic Charities, et cetera. Whoever's involved.
I would just caution, don't get too far out in front.
That's why I took all the heat I did today.
Let's, let's all move slowly through this together.
Madam Chair? Well, that's where I was going to put it, to have this discussion at the next board meeting. I like the idea of the workshop, that was going to be part of my suggestion. So we can take it off, I'll just say, you know, my thoughts now. I think before the workshop, maybe each of us should be thinking of what information we would like, who we'd like to hear it from. Obviously, we're going to, Catholic Charities, Daystar will be here, Sanctuary Mission, The Path, maybe CASA, the sheriff, school board you mentioned. So just be thinking like that. Maybe if it's okay with you all, we give a list of names to, Steve? Do you want the list of names? Or whoever, Cheryl, Cheryl would probably be. Let's give them to Cheryl. This is, you know, who we're thinking of we'd like to see. And then we'll have to decide, do we want to give them like a five-minute speech? Is that too long, depending on the names, like an elevator speech? Or let, let's hear about what they're doing. I think, like I was in the space, so I know. But I think some of you may actually be shocked of the level of service that's out there. And then maybe they can tell us some of the issues that they're still having. Like where are the gaps in service? MidFlorida Homeless Coalition will be a perfect person for that too, can identify gaps. Everything, maybe they have grants and they just need our blessing for things. I don't know how it's going to shake out, but I would like this to be a, a larger community discussion. Obviously, with that many people, we're going to have to limit the amount of time. Do you all like that idea? I'd like that. Very good.
Yep, and I believe all of those parties, except the board that you sit on, I don't think made the list, but all the other parties were invited on the bus tour. And at least a couple of them, MidFlorida intended to be there. And The Path intended to be there. I don't want to put words in their mouths, but I think they're feeling the love to come together. So that's a good suggestion.
Well, I just want to say, and I promise you, it probably seems that way. I am not being obstinate to you or to that. But we keep saying the bus tour, the bus tour, the bus tour. There's so much more. So we, it's not a group that we all have to go see what Catholic Charities is doing. That, that's not, I don't think that's what we're looking at. We want to know what everybody is doing. The, you know, if, if that's what, if that's what Catholic Charities is doing and they're putting up tents or the, or the units, it's fine, but there's so much more. So I, I wouldn't want this whole meeting to be like, okay, everyone get together, get on board with one organization and go take a bus tour. It's, it's going to be bigger than that. It's going to-
May I?
Please.
That's the whole point, is that it wasn't all about Catholic Charities. That's why all the other nonprofits were invited and most of them were on the bus, specifically for that reason, to break down the silos and look at one example that has been enormously successful. I personally have toured The Path, I have been to the Cold Weather Shelter, I've done all of that homework as well. And so it's, it's not about staking a flag in the ground, and this is my territory and hands-off, about any of these folks. It's all about working together to solve the problem. So yeah, they should all be, you know. I, I actually, Barbara Vendito may be surprised, I didn't want to drag on the meeting any longer, but here I am doing it. I wanted to tell her at the end of, when she talked, to say, I agree with everything she said. And one of the reasons that I really want to be friendly to Catholic Charities is because they do a lot of permanent, permanently, permanent housing that is permanently low income. Proven low-income residents. And so the folks that are making fifteen dollars an hour can actually survive in an apartment. So, and give a place to move up from tent to cottage to permanent housing. So I just, I'm glad I, glad we had the conversation today.
And I really do believe that. I think we're more looking at the same goal than people maybe perceive or that we can express. But that's, this is where we have to do it. Like I can't call you on the phone and talk about it any other time, so.
Oh, and Family Resource Center was on the bus too.
Yes, another great one, another great one.
Very good, Commissioner Kennard, do you have anything else? Oh, moving on. Commissioner Baric?
Yes ma'am, I do. I have a few statements that I want to read. I've been on the board for four and a half months now. This is the only time we commissioners can really talk to each other. I am an elected commissioner and as such need to be treated with the respect I give to the four of you. I sit patiently waiting for my turn and then when I ask to speak, I'm told, if you must. This is inappropriate and I really do not appreciate the condescending attitude. I am not a polished politician and I never will be. I am a citizen first and foremost. I also understand that there are rules which need to be followed. I attend my committees, listening and learning about areas of our county support, that our county supports. When I receive important information that needs to be brought to the board and the citizens, I expect I will relay that information in a timely fashion. I have ideas on ways to save money and increase services to our citizens, but the four of you do not usually listen. I understand park impact fees are for new parks. I listen to metro forecasting. The parks were added and we need to add and where their citizenship is growing. Like it or not, District Three is growing and is forecast to grow the largest and fastest within the next twenty years. This is where park impact fees should be spent. I don't have all the numbers, but the space I have proposed has the ability to bring a new park for families and kayakers, along with income from space rental for events and conferences into the county. When the administration has all the data for me, I plan to bring it forward. I have read through, and I'm going to show you the book, because everybody should have got their copy, Home Rule and Local Government Revenue Sources, the August twenty-four edition by Nobbers, Giblin, Nickerson Attorneys at Law. There is another possible use for tourism taxes. The tourist development council money can be used for a regional sports center. This would be a great use of the monies while giving children a place to practice their sports skills. I will be looking into this more closely to make sure that the funding for a new park area off of four ninety is an appropriate use for these non-citizens, non-citizens or, or visitors' monies. In other words, the citizens would not be paying any extra taxes for this or we would not have to use impact fees. It's hard to work together as a team of leaders when you are constrained to talk only at these meetings. Ideas are hard to discuss and to understand without communication. Thank you for your undivided attention and I look forward to moving forward as a valuable member of this commission.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Commissioner Baric, I'm sorry if you felt like you were ever disrespected by any of us. And I think I did tell you at another meeting that I did go see the, the park. And I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say about the tourism dollars. Just real quickly for myself, you probably already saw it, but-
Uh, just real quickly for myself, uh, you probably already saw it, but, um, in case you didn't, I just wanna let you know that, um, I have been working with, uh, D E P, Swift Mud, F W C, and F D O T about the issues in the Homocessa River. Um, sent an email next day, I had a meeting out there, which by Swift Mud set it up, so I wanna publicly thank my partners at Swift Mud, or our partners at Swift Mud, and, uh, it was forwarded, I didn't have the contact to F D O T, and, uh, the secretary Hall, uh, dropped everything and came out there, and same day, while he was out there, made a phone call, uh, to get the water tested, and then same day, the tester was going out there, so, as far as working, uh, with our partners from the state, I just wanna applaud all of their efforts in working together and taking some quick movement on this. So, I'm hoping the next time we meet, maybe we'll have some answers. Um...
Nice. Um, I've already burned my time up, Mrs. Lynn.
You may have burned your time up.
A lot of words.
I have nothing, Madam Chair. All right, Mr. Coke Building, come on back up. We're gonna open it up to the public. I'm affectionately calling him Mr. Coke Building, 'cause he has such a passion for it.
Passion, uh, Dean Godfrey. Um, to finish...
You have three minutes, start where you left off.
No, I quit, I won't take three minutes.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, my cleaning lady said her children came home with a note for a field trip. And she said, "The field trip was to go to the landfill to look at the birds." And she said, "Can you imagine how great it would be to be able to have a fine art studio, et cetera, et cetera, to go to a land, to go to instead of a landfill?" And I said, "Well, I don't have any kids, but I'd never even thought of that." And so, I'm very serious about this. Um, if you can change your mind, fit me in, I'm capable of doing what I'm asking. Uh, and I am passionate about doing this project. So, I respectfully am finished with you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is open to the public, is there anyone else wishing to address the public? All right, seeing none.
Madam Chair, may I, I'm sorry, when I was out at the, uh, Coke machine trying to get substance, uh, this day, uh, there were some judges out there that were trying to time themselves to come in and speak in response to Mr. Godfrey. Uh, I think that they've left, but...
Judge Spade just walked to the door, would you like to speak in response to affectionately Mr. Coke Building? He wants your space.
Nothing like being called out, Judge.
Our, 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 our needs for space are well documented, um, and we think that y'all are listening. We appreciate Mr. Howard's efforts in this regard. Um, in order for us to get the space that we need in this building, in, in the courthouse, um, some other pieces need to move. Um, my understanding is that what's being talked about is the public defender going there, into the Coke Building. So, I mean, we need the space here, there's a very limited amount of space available in Inverness. I did read the, the article in the Chronicle the other day, so I did, I didn't hear what...
He just wants to buy it and turn it into a fine arts museum?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear what he said today, but, you know, we, we need, we need the space. We, we need this, we need the space in the courthouse to do the, to do the court business, to do the people's business. And, um, we're... There wasn't adequate space for the court when this building was completed twenty years ago. Um, we're hopeful that what is being put on the table now will at least get us through the next fifteen, twenty years. Um, as the community's growing, y'all know that. We need, we need the space, and the courts need space in the courthouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um... That completes today's agenda, um, we have no advisory board announcements. We do have a five oh one certain, I would like, uh, five-minute break. Let's... Oh, yes, uh, let's be back here at, um, five twenty, how's that? Get that mic, mic'd up. All right, good evening, how are you all this evening? We are here for a public hearing, five oh one P M, P U D, three zero six four Hampton Hills LLC, and Truitt Gardner and Gardner Truitt Hudson, P A, O B O, Florida Health Science Center, Inc., doing business as Tampa General Hospital. Madam Attorney, take us away.
Yes, uh, Commissioners, with regard to P U D three zero six four, do you have any ex parte communications you need to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
No.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair, at the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, meaning the Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map, and the master plan for the Citrus Hills Development of Regional Impact, for multiple items, including an increase in allowable non-residential square footage and area, an allowance for a helicopter pad to serve, excuse me, service a proposed hospital, and allowance for certain, a creation of out parcels with internal access. Providing for applicability, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivenirs errors, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date, and I believe Mr. Abel is here on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners, appreciate your time again, uh, and good job catching up, that was impressive. My name is Eric Abel, Vice President of Hampton Hills LLC, a developer of Citrus Hills, uh, D R I, still exists, I suppose. We make this application, P U D thirty sixty-four, together with Gardner Brewer Hudson, P A, on behalf of Tampa General Hospital, as it regards parcel A of our D R I. The hospital has a contractual interest in the property as they seek to purchase fifty-three acres within parcel A to accommodate a top-of-the-line regional hospital with commensurate medical office buildings, along with a helicopter, a helipad, and ample parking. There are many moving parts in reaching the goals of this application. We're thankful to have had the cooperation of the Board of County Commissioners and Department of Technical Services to find a way to share drainage facilities on adjacent county property. Giving you an update as promised by us, since then, developer has taken on all the costs of permitting, including nearly two hundred thousand dollars toward capturing and relocating gopher tortoises, uh, so you can feel comfortable on that front, I know there was some public input on that issue for this. Plus, construction costs, maintenance, and enlarging the drainage area retention, retention area, situated immediately east of the subject of today's application. Thank Joanna Katu and her entire staff, um, they've been dedicated many hours to understanding the importance and propriety of adding a regional hospital for this county's population. Staff has been instrumental in working through this application and understanding the many matters which arise in such a large development, as well as the impacts and benefits to accommodate a regional hospital. For your complete understanding, I want you to know Tampa General has shown great foresight in its planning, land ac- and land acquisition. The approvals sought today are not just for the benefit of the county's current needs, but also reflect our fast-growing county's future needs. Tampa General Hospital is not looking to build a hospital to just serve today's residents, but they're looking ahead to be able to serve, properly serve the county's future residents as well. The immediate plans show the construction of a one hundred twenty-bed hospital with a proportionally-sized medical office building. They also present future phases to increase the size of the hospital to a four hundred-bed facility ultimately, with additional medical office buildings and expanded parking. All of that brings us here for the board to obtain certain approvals and updates to the D R I, which was originally created thirty-nine years ago, in nineteen eighty-six. There are four items on, on today's, we're asking for today. One, although we initially filed this application to increase the... One, although we initially filed this application to increase the approved development rights of BCO land use by an additional 2 million square feet of improvements, primarily driven by the desire to permit Tampa General Hospital to construct and operate the regional hospital. Since the time of our application, the request has been reduced, modified from the 2 million to a 1.3 million square feet and a 400-bed hospital. The hospital preferred to base its approvals for the hospital by bed count rather than square footage. They worked out the conversion numbers directly with county staff, so we are in agreement with staff and PDC's recommended conditions of approval, including the requirement of a type C buffer along any new BCO use in parcel A of the DRI where it's abutting existing residential land to the north. These revisions are included in the updated map H submitted. Second item, we are applying for the right to design, construct, and operate a medical helipad on parcel A for TGHs, I'll use that instead of Tampa General, provision of emergency transport medical services. The helipad is similar to other medical helipads in the county, and although it is unlikely that will be extremely busy, it is extremely critical when it's used. County staff and the PDC recommend such helipads receive FDOT or FAA approval, or and FAA approval, and be limited to use for emergency room and hospital use. We are in agreement with county staff and PDC with regard to those conditions of approval. Number three, we are requesting an increase of non-residential land uses by a factor of 10%. It is important to note that we are not seeking to expand the categories of land use, that is, we're not looking creating new land uses that then are already approved within the DRI. And other than the TGH site and its adjacent property to its east, in parcel A, we are only seeking to increase the non-residential acreage across parcel C's 790 acres by adding 1.2 acres, increasing it from 22 to 23.2 of non-residential use. So this request is more about recognizing the different standards of development since 1986. In summary, it doesn't seek different uses or any substantial increase of non-residential acreage. It is intended to recognize the intensity of uses, or that the intensity of uses has increased over the last 39 years, and we wish to reasonably keep in stride with the times. County staff has expressed no concerns with this request, and the PDC recommended approval. These revisions are also included in the updated map H, which was submitted. Finally, item number four, we're applying for the right to design and create out parcels that may be accessible by internal ways and access points, provided that traffic patterns meet with the approval of county engineering. I went through something like this at my last hearing here, and I think we all agreed, not about this, but at that time, that internal roadways and access points should be better for the county's roadway systems. We are in agreement with county staff's condition that resulting traffic access management standards must meet with approval of the county engineer. We believe well-designed commercial development should be allowed to provide internal access instead of impacting highway traffic and forced roadway frontage, which can have dramatic impact, negative impact upon the county's roadway system. The PDC recommended approval as well. That concludes my presentation. Next up is the co-applicant, Gardner Brewer Hudson PA, representing TGH. This is my first time being a co-applicant before the Board, and I don't know if you have a process you'd like me to follow, but I certainly want to tell you I'm available to answer any questions that may come up, as well as after the public input portion. Thank you. Any questions immediately?
Good evening. My name is Addie Clark. I'm with Gardner Brewer Hudson, and my address is 400 North Ashley Drive in Tampa, Florida. So again, we are honored to come here before you tonight to represent Florida Health Sciences Doing Business as Tampa General Hospital, which are the current owners and operators of the TGH Crystal River Emergency Center and the Crystal River Hospital located about 20 to 25 minutes northwest of this project's location, which you can see on the screens here. The emergency center, as you know, opened in August of 2020 and has drastically grown in patient service and is close to seeing as many patients as the TGH Crystal River ER. Uh, next slide, thank you. We're here before you today as a result of, as Eric mentioned, the expected increase in population, as well as the need to serve the existing population right here in the center of the county. The two hospitals currently in the county are located on opposite sides of the county, which are about 25 miles, 20 to 25 miles in between them, as you can see. These two hospitals are already often at capacity and, and on emergency department diversion, which is when an emergency room is so full that unfortunately ambulances have to go to a different hospital, and that ER can't accept new ambulance arrivals. So there's an obvious and serious gap lacking acute care in the center of the county, as you can see. Given the anticipated growth in the Citrus Hills area in the next five years, there's an existing and future need for expanded acute care. In fact, with just within a four-mile radius of this project, there are thousands of existing units within Citrus Hills, Beverly Hills, Tuscany Ranch, Pine Ridge, Black Diamond Ranch, Timberline, and parts of Citrus Springs. These units are 20 minutes away from the nearest hospital, which can be a serious concern. TGH is honored to already represent Citrus County and hopes to expand along County Road 486 for faster and more acute care services. And it's because of the rooftops that currently exist is exactly why TGH is needed in this location. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So TGH has done extensive and ample research and found that there's a current deficit in the number of beds compared to the current population and its demographics. As you saw, bless you, as you saw in the previous slide, this is a prime location for the hospital, given the two already over-capacity hospitals, 20 minutes to the east and the west. So TGH, in order to fix this problem, TGH is proposing to purchase 53 acres of land that are adjacent to the existing freestanding emergency department to expand into two phases, which, as Eric mentioned, would bring 400 new beds, two new medical office buildings, and infrastructure and parking to adequately serve those uses. And a vital part of this request is that helipad in this location, and as we know, helipad services are absolutely necessary to serve the population without using county resources to transfer patients to the designated landing pads. Both the Crystal River Hospital and the HCA Florida Citrus Hospital have these helipads, and this arimed transport is so important for immediate care. And TGH's arim medical hospitals are equipped with the most advanced life support systems, as we know. And so this need for helipad does exist now, and to serve those patients immediately closer to this area. And, um, next slide, please. Thank you. So this image right here is the conceptual image of what phase one could look like. Again, this is all very conceptual, but we wanted to focus and note that all development and infrastructure would be located as close to that main road as possible for the best-served operations of the county and, and for the, for TGH. So you can see here, phase one could look like 120 new beds, as well as 120,000 square feet of medical office. And then phase two, please. And then here, an example of what phase two would look like on top of that phase one, so additional beds for that total of 400, as well as another medical office building, and again, all located adjacent to that county road. And so again, we understand that there are concerns about having a hospital in this area, but given the location along a major county road, and because of the existing and growing number of residents in the area, this is exactly why TGH needs to be in this location. And Bill, well, for any questions, and I'll invite up Truett Gardner.
Good evening. Truett Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive, here on behalf of TGH, and just wanted to say, TGH is excited to be coming to this area. They have been one of my absolute favorite clients for, for years, and what makes them that is just the partnerships that they build. And every time we seem to come to an elected body, it's truly a partnership between TGH and that governmental entity, and they're viewing the same here. So just wanted to say that, again, we're happy to answer any questions. Your staff has been great. Eric's been a great guide through the process. And in addition to that, we've got three officials from TGH. Linda Stockton, who's the Senior Vice President and Hospital President for, of TGH Crystal River is here, and she wants to offer a few words. And then also, in the event you have questions, we have Stacy Brant, she's the Executive Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer. And then finally, Jennifer Sime, she's the Senior Director in and of Strategic Growth and Governmental Affairs. So happy to be in front of you, honored to be here, and look forward to TGH's expansion into Citrus County.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I was really excited to be here tonight because this project actually has meant a lot to, to us, in just the center of the county, so, um, you know, we've been faced, I came to TGH Crystal River in 2018, immediately really recognized that, that with the growing population, just access to care was a big problem, especially in the center of the county. So I, I know that if you look at the services that we want to provide here in Citrus County, we do have a lack of many services, inpatient services, outpatient services, primary care, specialty care, and those all are things that we try to recruit for every day, and I think just having the TGH partnership has really, will really help in, in that recruitment of those services. One thing that we did notice, if you look at the, that's just really the landscape of Citrus County and what we're looking at as far as what we need for services. So now that we're part of TGH, we're looking at what those, kind of forming our strategic plan and looking at what those services are that we need, and we've bringing a lot of different services, cancer care, we just opened our new thoracic program at the hospital. And one of the problems that we're having at our existing physical plant is really, there's just not a lot of room for all those services. And so that's what we like to do, is just have more room to grow. And one thing that we noticed when we looked at access to care, really in the center of the county, back in 2018, when I first got here, we started looking at emergency services in Citrus County. They're just really, between the two hospitals, there's a 25-mile spance, as we mentioned in our presentation, and that was just a really far away for someone to travel for emergency care. So we looked at opening the freestanding emergency room, and it was, and we opened it in August of 2020, really right in the middle of the COVID pandemic, and it was really such a blessing to the county to have that third emergency room there in the county. But what we've seen over time, that facility is actually seeing almost the same number of patients that the main freestanding, that the main hospital is. Probably about 47% of our ED volume is at the freestanding, and about 53% is at the main hospital. And typically, a freestanding emergency department sees a lower acuity patient, and you don't have as many admissions through the freestanding. What we're seeing here in, in Citrus County is of just, a lot of people are flocking to the freestanding for emergency care, and it's actually higher acuity services. And we noticed that because of the admissions, we're getting five to eight admissions per day from the freestanding emergency department, which is pretty high for, for a freestanding center. And also, just, just the number of patients, the acuity of the patients that we're seeing, we, we track that, and it's much higher than a, than a typical freestanding emergency department. I, I know there, we, we mentioned the helipad that, that is needed. Right now, we use county resources, and we have to divert that to an existing landing pad down the street. I know that, that's a big drain on community resources. So I think typically, we only probably see 24 flights out of there in, in a year. So it's, it's very few, it's really not that many, and that compares to maybe the 60 that we have at the main facility. So, so really, the number of transfers are typically going out with a larger 400-bed hospital that, that allows for expansion of services, you would probably be retaining more of those patients at the hospital, so you'd probably not see a huge increase in, in helicopter traffic. And I, that would also be mitigated, so we would really work on that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Uh, I think Ms. Stockton needs to give her name and title for the record. She didn't at the beginning, sorry. It's just for the record, it's video.
Sorry. Linda Stockton.
We all know who you are, but not necessarily everyone in the audience does.
Linda Stockton, Senior Vice President and Hospital President, TGH Crystal River.
My apologies, thank you.
Um, the, the other thing, really, the kind of, when you look at the number of patients that we're seeing at the freestanding, and, and the services that we need, it really points to needing a full-service hospital in that location. That's where the population growth is. We are seeing a planned five to seven thousand, 7,000 new homes in that area over the next five years, and each of those patients that show up in our freestanding has to be transported to a larger facility where they can get the services they need. So I think a full-service hospital in that location, it's just, it's time for Citrus County, and I think we're very fortunate that Tampa General would like to invest in the center of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess they're done.
Let me pull mine up. Madam Chair, did, did you all have any questions for the applicant? Because now would be the time to, to take, to do those.
No, I have no questions, thank you.
All right, this is an application to amend the Citrus Hills Development of Regional Impact Master Plan, and in this picture, actually, they've already done a great job explaining this, so I'm only going to brush over it, but this is the existing ER on 486. And this is the existing DRI on an aerial. And this is the, the emergency room is just out of the picture on the left, and this is looking along 486. So this is the DRI master plan that's currently in place. Mr. Abel did not mention it, but he kind of touched on it, where it says parcel C, that's area west of Ottawa, between Ottawa and 491, is not currently developed, but they are definitely getting ready to start plating in that area, so we are going to see some development there eventually. So this is the area that's proposed to change as far as area. So they're asking for an increase in use for commercial, and this is because of the hospital. The hospital, we're, we're very happy to have them here and, and feel very fortunate that Tampa General's looking at our community. If they do come, however, they have basically taken up the remainder of the commercial acreage that Citrus Hills has in their master plan. So one thing they are proposing to do, Citrus Hills, is extend that BCO, that is their commercial category, I outlined it in the staff report, up to the north. And you can see that on the right is the existing DRI, and then on the left is the proposed master plan. The Planning and Development Commission did have one condition on this particular request, they felt that a type C buffer should be required along any BCU use in parcel A with those residential units. This is the existing commercial I've just kind of generally shown you, it's on 486 and 491. This application in front of you does not add, add commercial in the middle of Terra Vista or anything like that. These are all existing commercial areas that would not be able to develop with the hospital because the hospital is taking up what's left. That's why they're asking for an increase in commercial square footage, and you did hear it's 400 acres plus now 1.3 million square feet of commercial. They're also asking about the helicopter pad on the parcel, you heard some information about that, that is to be expected for any hospital. They're asking to improve, increase their other non-residential developments like neighborhood services and community facility by 10%. And finally, you also heard about the out parcels. So there are seven conditions proposed. The Planning and Development Commission did hear this in March, and they did recommend approval with that additional condition of the type C buffer where the land use is being That's all I have.
Board members, do you have any questions of staff?
All right. We are going to open this up to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application, please come forward, fill out a green sheet. You will have three minutes. You can do it now after you're done, so it's fine.
My name is Frank Diamond, I live in La Canto. I just want to state that I'm for the hospital. Had some personal experience three years ago with the emergency center, the freestanding emergency room there, excuse me. I was scheduled to have heart surgery a few weeks ahead of a time that all of a sudden I had pain, so I went to the, I was admitted to the emergency center, and I was in there 18 hours because they couldn't find a hospital room for me. They tried at HCA, which was Citrus Memorial at the time, there was no rooms available. And then, so they went to Bavera, which is now, you know, Tampa General. This was at the end of COVID, you know, in '22, they were having nursing staffing problems at Bavera, so they delayed my transfer, so I stayed there 18 hours. So I stayed there 18 hours with heart problems. I'm just thinking, wow, if that hospital was there at that time, I probably would have been in the emergency room for an hour, and I could have been moved over. So I see a need, and with the growth that we've got, obviously, that type of thing is going to multiply. So I'm for the hospital. I understand the traffic concerns and the helicopter, but that is at intersection of two four-lane divided highways. It's not like they're trying to build a bucky's. You know, you're not going to have a tsunami of traffic there. So I'm for it. I can see the need, and I understand it, and I hope it gets done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you're still with us.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner. Dr. Desai, 507 Northwest 97 in Citrus River. I've been in this county practicing physician for the last 35 years. And I have never seen, and I repeat this, I have never seen patients in the hallway. There are patients in the hallway, they are on the stretcher, they are on the chairs and sofas, getting IV therapy and looking for the care. And so many times, we have to transfer the patient out of this county because there are no beds. As you know, the population has grown from 90 to 150,000. So we badly need the hospital in this area. And regarding the ambulance and helicopters, these are not toys, they are saving people's lives. So I don't know why people have problems with the helicopters and ambulance. They are trying to transfer the patient from one place to another to provide services. So I think we should have this hospital as soon as possible.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Velt. I live on 2760 Reston Terrace, which is just right around the corner from Plan Hospital. I mean, the hospital, that idea is fine, that's great. My big concern is the traffic. What, how is that being addressed? I look at Forest Ridge when you've got the school, either before school or when they're...
Pull the mic down just a little bit, so they can get...
Oh, sorry, okay. So when, when, you know, when the school starts at the end, the traffic is unbelievable. I see, I mean, we've lived there 11 years, how the traffic has increased on 46. And I can only imagine what it will be like with a huge hospital there. Like I said, I mean, the hospital plan's great, but what plans are being made to accommodate all the traffic? And there is going to be that much more traffic. You've got employees, you've got emergency vehicles, you've got the school, and that's not going away. And I've never, I have not heard anyone say, this is what we're going to do to deal with the traffic. And it, I mean, it's bad enough, 46 is just horrendous. 491 is horrendous. And it's just growing, it's getting worse and worse. And I don't, I haven't heard anybody say, other than saying, yes, we're going to have a traffic issue, what is being done to address those issues? Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
My name is Gary Kenworthy, 3075 North Thornapple Terrace. You guys have been here a long time today. Keep it simple, right?
Good evening and welcome.
Welcome, thank you. My name is John Wyler, 778 West Cockatiel Loop, Hernando. I'm one of the owners of, in, not of, in Forest Ridge Village. And I've been following the clearing of the lot for the hospital and, and plus. And at the last public meeting at the county, I asked for buffer zone because we abut the property in question. And I'm thoroughly encouraged by the number of trees that they've left as a buffer between Forest Ridge Village and the subject property. So I hope, I hope the trees remain because it's, it's a good 200 or 300 feet of trees that are evergreen trees that have been planted by Citrus Hills, I believe. So I give a big thumbs up to the buffer zone so far.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Greg Johnson, 1137 West Skyview Landings Drive. I think the hospital's a great idea. My question is, why here? Unless they're donating the property to them. There's some great property over by the YMCA. There's some great property over by the junkyard. And none of that is sitting in the middle of a residential area. I think we need a hospital here, a great hospital. It sounds fantastic. I've been involved with medical devices for a long time. So, I mean, it sounds great. It doesn't, doesn't belong in the middle of a residential area. So why here, when you have all this land around us? That's my only question. I hope you ask it.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? If not, I'm closed, I'm going to close the open to the public at this time.
Well, I just want you to feel satisfied, as well as the public input. I'd like to address the two concerns that are brought up. Number one, the traffic concerns. To allay the concerns of the public regarding the traffic, this is why we feel it was important to couple limiting the access to those roadways and allow the internal access roadways. Also, to be sure, we also in the application are agreeing that it needs to abide by traffic standards as established by the traffic, your traffic department, technical services. The second item was, why here? And I think it's important to know this. It's a great question, and certainly one we ask ourselves before we think about conveying land to any, any outside organization. TGH searched all of Citrus County to find the very best location for its hospital facility. This location is the single best location in the county, as evidenced by the maps presented. This location was and is actually planned for medical facilities. It always has been planned for that, and is the only site planned as such and centrally situated to provide important medical services. Within a four-mile radius, there exists all of the mini-village of Citrus Hills, about 12,000 units, all of Beverly Hills, 4,500 units, all of Tuscany Ranch's, 6,000 planned units, all of Black Diamond Ranch, all of Timberline, and half of Pine Ridge, half of Pine Ridge's 5,000 units and parts of Citrus Springs as well. We hope that you see the compelling truth. It is because of the rooftops in the area that TGH needs to be at this location.
Could you address the buffer?
Yes.
Do you plan to leave that 200 to 300 feet that the gentleman spoke of?
We, we had agreed at PDC and certainly as county standards have higher standards of buffering, type C being the biggest or largest. We want to abide by that. We certainly agree that any transition from residential to non-res should be the highest level of buffer. We're just, I'm glad we got a little compliment there on our planting in the past. Historically, we, we do care about, because we sell the residence in so many instances. We also want to have that buffer there for both, both parties. TGH or whomever the property owners are want to be good neighbors. They're not looking to disturb the neighborhood, but they do want to be there to provide the services for them. So we, we are agreeable to the type C buffering standards.
Madam Chair, based on competent and substantial evidence, I make a motion that we approve PUD 3064 and direct the chair and clerk to execute the ordinance for PUD 3064.
I wonder how this vote's going to go. Give it to me, it's my district.
I'll give it to you, Davis. I have a motion by Commissioner Canar and a second by Commissioner Davis. I don't have to open it back up to the public, right? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0, congratulations.
Tampa General, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No fighting, girls. Chair, chair, Madam Chair, adjourned. I'm sorry.